Thank you councillors, Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? No apologies? Thank you. Confirmation of minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,690th meeting held on Tuesday the 30th of August 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,690th meeting of council held on the 30th of August 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Questions? Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, thank you Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the February 2022 flooding event demonstrated how quickly Brisbane's dams can become problematic during a La Nina event. Could you please update the chamber on your position on this matter?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Toomey, and you're absolutely spot on because we saw that in February, we started with combined dam levels of, that were less than 60% in many cases, and then within a matter of just a few days, those dams had filled up entirely, including our very biggest dam, Wyvenhoe. And so, to give you a perspective on how quickly the water came into the dams, Wyvenhoe Dam went from 58.7% on the 24th of February to 183% on the 27th of February. So just in a few days, a massive influx of water into the dams, is something we have never seen before, far faster than we saw it happen in 2011. And I know there were changes made to the way the dam has been operated after 2011, but I am simply saying, do we need to make some changes to the way that the dam is operated following the February event? Those unprecedented inflows into the dams, because right now, at this point, our water grid is 88% at capacity. Wyvenhoe Dam is more than 90% capacity. Somerset Dam is more than 80% capacity, and there are many other dams around the region that are 100% capacity. And I know you councillor will know that the Inugra reservoir is 100% right now. And I know that yourself councillor Toomey and also councillor Wines are very interested in this because outflows and overflowing or spilling of the Inugra reservoir goes straight into local creeks and is a cause of concern for local residents. So the question needs to be asked, do we need to do some proactive releases from the dams if we're facing another La Nina season? If we're going to see those massive influxes again, now I'm not, I don't know whether we will, we all hope that we won't, is now the time to start looking at proactive releases? Is now the time to start reviewing that dam manual once again in light of what just happened earlier this year? And so I think it's a, it's a fair and reasonable question to ask. The reason we are in this situation is because the dam operators are caught in this difficult position where on the one hand, they're thinking about future droughts and water supply issues, and they know that the population of South East Queensland has grown massively, there's been no additional dams added, the very expensive $7 billion water grid is only partially operational, and desalination plants as well, we know about them, some of them built and then sold them operated. So because there is no water security for South East Queensland, the dam operators have this challenge of thinking about a future drought, but then on the other side of the coin, a future flood. And so they're trying to hang on to every drop of water they've got in the dams to guard against future drought, yet we've got the potential, you know, maybe of more flooding to occur. So the answer to this, and the long term answer is to have a look at supplementing our ongoing water supply, our water security. But in the meantime, it is a fair question I think to ask, should be we be proactively releasing water from the dams? So I've raised this with the relevant minister today, just to ask that important question. I look forward to hearing his response on this. And certainly councillor Butcher, we've found in the past to be reasonable and good to work with, and so hopefully councillor Butcher takes this in the spirit that it is meant. It is a debate that is healthy, it is a fair question, and it is one that I think, I'm not the only person asking at this point in time. I know there is a lot of focus on what might happen in the coming summer, everyone is putting their mind to that, and this is a question that I think needs to be resolved and answered.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Publicly available records of your civic cabinet meetings show they run for about 30 minutes or less. These are the meetings of the key decision makers in council. You don't spend these meetings discussing solutions to Brisbane's housing crisis, there's no discussion on the progress of your flood review, we see no vision for the suburbs of Brisbane. In fact, there is never even any general business raised by your LNP councillors, and this is after your administration has been in power for almost 20 years. Lord Mayor, have you run out of ideas?
Lord Mayor.
Well, that's an interesting question, and the answer is no. We've got plenty of ideas, they keep coming. They, they started with a bold agenda to make a cleaner, greener Brisbane, to invest in public transport, to invest in active transport, to invest in our biggest new parkland in 50 years, in Victoria Park, and then they have rolled on from there. And we have taken this city through a pandemic, we have taken this city through a flood, we've kept the budget strong under major challenges, and we continue on top of all of the recovery work to invest in the future. Right now, you will see work happening right across the suburbs, and whether it's building new footpaths, investing in local parks, and we see improvements to parks even despite the recovery continuing to happen on an ongoing basis, and we see then the major projects progressing well as well. Whether it's the Brisbane Metro where the pilot vehicle has been through its rigorous testing and we've placed an order for 59 more, whether it's the tunnel work that's underway in Adelaide Street, whether it's the Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek bridges that are under construction, or our planning and progressing work on Victoria Park, it is all happening. Big picture, the local picture, everywhere in Bateen, and plus on top of that, we have, we have worn the biggest hits that this council has ever seen financially, yet kept the budget strong. And so, we are very committed to this city and to its future, we are very committed to always coming up with new ideas, always coming up with new solutions, and we will continue to do so. But, but if councillor Cassidy wants to be a clock watcher in terms of particular meetings, that is his issue. The reality is the people of Brisbane can see exactly what is being achieved by this administration, by this cohesive, united, fantastic team that all works together and wakes up every morning with a spring in its step to deliver for the people of Brisbane. They can see the results out there, and we can see from Labour's approach that the only thing they have to offer is party politics, is criticism, talking Brisbane down, talking down the investment that's happening, opposing for example, 14 out of 16 neighbourhood plans for this city when we're trying to boost housing supply for the people of Brisbane. And so, there is only one side that has run out of ideas, and that is Labour councillors and opposition councillors, and they ran out of ideas 18 years ago. 18 years ago. 18 years ago, and, no actually, there was one good idea, free sunscreen in parks, that was their big policy idea. They, they have tried various things over the years to try and get a new spring in a step, and including knifing Lord Merrill candidates and replacing them with other Lord Merrill candidates, knifing leaders of the opposition and replacing them with other leaders of the opposition. None of it has worked because they don't actually have any ideas, they don't come up with anything, they just criticise, they attack and they play party politics. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shriner Council is a very proud sponsor of the annual Brisbane Festival, which officially launched last Friday night. Could you please update the chamber, what is in store for this year's Brisbane Festival?
Councillor Howard.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank councillor Landers for the question, because Brisbane Festival just gets bigger and better each year, and that is due in no small part to the creative genius of the one and only Louise Bazina and the wonderful Charlie Coosh who really worked so hard to make Brisbane come alive. And this is the third programme from Louise Bazina, Brisbane's festival wildly talented artistic director, with more than 580 performances, 230 of those which are free, including 22 new works, 12 Queensland premieres and six international presentations. And the wait is finally over with Riverfire kicking off Brisbane Festival with a bang on Saturday night. And I know that I was up at Wilson's Outlook with a lot of my fellow Central Ward people thoroughly enjoying an amazing fireworks display, and you never know what to expect with Brisbane Festival, and they kept true to form by switching the programme up a little, lighting up the sky at the very beginning this year with Brisbane's biggest fireworks extravaganza courtesy of the Australian Retirement Trust. But I have to say Chair, the Riverfire is far from the best we have to offer this year. We have a month of fun for the whole family this September, whether it's for your teen, your little ones, your inner child, there is a feast of fun activities for the whole family at the Brisbane Festival this year. From circus treats and physical feats to a picnic under the moon and so much more. Hundreds of school holiday boredom busters are right here at our fingertips, including more than 230 free ones as I said before. With festival hubs in Southbank, North Shore Brisbane, West Village and seven free mini festivals heading to the suburbs, we've got everyone covered. We have a massive First Nations programme across music, dance, theatre, cabaret and circus showcasing a programme of stellar work from more than 160 First Nation artists in this year's festival. Paying homage to the heartwarming story of Yvonne Gulligong, Sunshine Supergirl is taking over the Playhouse Theatre with a celebration of spirit and passion over adversity, a tribute to a woman whose sporting prowess continues to inspire a nation, giving hope to thousands of young girls across the country. Before Ash Barty lifted the trophy at Wimbledon, there was Yvonne Gulligong, the first Aboriginal person to ever win the French Open Signals at 19, mind you, and then going on to winning Wimbledon in 1971, before becoming the first mother to win Wimbledon in 66 years in 1980. A truly inspiring story and definitely one of my top picks for this year's festival. But, that's not all, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you councillor. Will the Chair take a question?
Oh, we're in question time councillor Cumming. When, when, when you have the opportunity, you get the chance.
I don't see why I want to acknowledge the fact that state government helps fund the festival, sort of thing.
I'm, I'm only part of the way through and that's the Chair.
Take the interjection councillor Howard.
Brisbane Festival is doing everything by bringing many opportunities to experience the power of storytelling through September. Queen Street City taking over the Cremorne Theatre, Anita Heistidis, which I think is premiering tonight at Le Bois, Jessica Moby kicked it all off at Riverfire on Saturday night, and Shakespeare's Othello in the Billy Brown Theatre. The celebrations just keep going on and on. So let me tell you Chair, wouldn't it, it wouldn't be the Brisbane Festival without the wonderful queer and marvellous talents of our LGBTQ+ community. So we got to see that firsthand at the launch with the House of Alexander taking over with a taster of their ballroom extravaganza celebrating queer bodies of all shapes and sizes and all identities within the gender spectrum. New in 2022 is the largest visual arts programme, including new commissions, exhibitions and large scale installations by internationally renowned artists. The reimagined Southbank Piazza is welcoming a vibrant line up of work, including Magic, Circus and Dance and Australasian Dance Collective's Aftermath, so a wonderful local group that is doing so well. QPAC is also returning as a celebrated festival hub with all four theatres housing major theatrical events, including four premieres, and some of those will be 14 by Shake and Stir and an 80s video game inspired Queen City by Alitha Beeston, Holding Achilles, which I was privileged to go and see the other night, which of course.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, has Brisbane City Council recommenced its flood resilient homes programme yet? And if so, is it available to all suburbs as recommended in recommendation 3.2 by Paul De Jersey?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question councillor Johnston. I can confirm that we have for the very first time state and federal funding for a flood resilient homes programme. As you know, we started this programme, we did the proof of concept, and it was in fact so well received that the state and federal government jumped on board and they allocated a significant amount of funding towards it. And so, what we see is a programme now being run by the state government together with federal funding that.
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman Relevance, my question was, has Brisbane City Council recommenced its flood resilient homes programme yet? And if so, is it available to all suburbs? I'm aware of what the state government are proposing to do.
Thank you councillor Johnston, you're now debating your point of order, I believe the Lord Mayor is relevant to the question, explaining how flood resilience works now with the assistance of federal and state funding.
I appreciate that's what he's doing, Mr Chairman, but that's not what the question was.
Councillor Johnston, I believe the Lord Mayor is relevant to the question, thank you.
Thank you. Once again, we see that despite the fact that there are five minutes allocated to answer the question, it appears that people want to ask questions but don't actually want to hear the answers. So what we have seen is, we've seen a significant pool of funding that have put in towards the flood resilient homes programme, it is now a statewide scheme, which is fantastic. And so, the state government is running that, and we had the decision to make, so we had allocated funding to continue our flood resilient programme, but because the state government has far more funding and the federal government has far more funding, we have made the decision to introduce a flood resilient business programme and a flood resilient communities programme. And so, these are areas that are not covered by state or federal funding, and so we have decided, because there is a very healthy amount of funding in the flood resilient homes programme, that we would target areas that aren't covered by the state and federal programmes. So what we've done is make sure we leverage our involvement and our learnings from this programme, we welcome the state and federal government on board for the homes programme, but we're, we're now investing in community groups and local businesses, and so.
Councillor Johnston, please.
Well, if you have, if councillor Johnston has a comment on whether there's enough money available in the state and federal pool, she can make that commentary, Mr Chair, to the state and federal government. We are focusing on a gap here that hasn't been filled.
Councillor Johnston, please.
And I wonder if councillor Johnston thinks that community groups and businesses shouldn't be supported with this funding and this programme, because she is somehow against this programme by the sounds of it. So I think that's really disappointing, she can quite easily pick up the phone to her mate Mark Bailey, and if there's an issue with a lack of funding in the flood resilient homes programme, or if people are missing out, raise that with the state and federal government. We're making sure we fill the gaps proactively in communities and in businesses.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Relevance, Mr Chairman, recommendation 3.2 by Paul De Jersey was about Brisbane reintroducing its flood resilient homes programme for residents across Brisbane. My question is, has council recommenced its flood resilient homes programme, and is it applicable across all suburbs? And the Lord Mayor still hasn't answered that.
Councillor Johnston, you're now debating the point of order, the Lord Mayor is answering the question about flood resilience.
So, 3.2, which councillor Johnston quoted selectively and left, left an important part out, let me actually read what it says. Flood resilient homes programme, dot, dot, that the flood resilient homes programme be continued, is it being continued? Yes it is, it's been funded by the state and federal government, tick, and if possible, extend it into more flood affected areas, is that happening?
Councillor Johnston.
Tick.
Councillor, councillor Johnston.
Tick, tick, tick.
Councillor Johnston, enough. Councillor Johnston.
Okay, so that, that one, tick.
Councillor Johnston, enough.
Listen to the squawking and squealing when, when it's been revealed what the recommendation actually says. And finally, and that consideration be given to its extension to flood affected business premises. Tick. And in fact, we went, we went one step further and we're going to work with community groups as well. And so, not only have we met the recommendation, we've expanded it further, businesses, community groups. And so, all I can see in this question is a politically motivated gripe, and if she has a concern, Mr Chair, with the amount of funding.
Lord Mayor, please refer to councillors by their titles.
If councillor Johnston has a concern with the amount of funding, raise it with the state and federal governments.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the Shriner Council is working hard to address the housing crisis through a range of policy and planning initiatives. Could you please update the chamber on our latest effort in this work, and are you aware of any alternate ideas?
Thank you councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Hammond for the question. It's not surprising that people want to live in Brisbane, work in Brisbane and visit Brisbane. As Australia's fastest growing capital city, Brisbane is rich with opportunity and an unstoppable momentum. We've experienced unprecedented levels of population growth with an influx of interstate residents moving to our city, and you can't blame them. The only reason Brisbane is one of the best functioning cities in the country is because we take the time to plan for the future, and the city planning and suburban renewal portfolio ensures that we have a strong pipeline of new homes delivered across the city is by far our greatest priority. But it's not just about hitting the dwelling targets set upon us by the state government, 188,000 new dwellings by 2041, because we are well and truly meeting these targets. It's about providing the right mix of housing in the right locations to ensure, I've just lost my page, to ensure that, to ensure that Brisbane residents at every stage of life have a place to call home. Each level of government has a role and responsibility in this space, and I believe each councillor and elected representative also holds responsibility to support and encourage new housing in their wards and electorates. We will continue to put pressure on the state government and hold them to their responsibility to deliver more social and affordable housing. Disappointingly, they are letting Queenslanders down on this front. 50,000 people are on the housing waitlist and this list is growing, the majority of which are those most in need of a roof over their heads, our most vulnerable residents. Our housing system is under incredible pressure, and this Labour state government are scratching their heads, not knowing how or where to build these homes. They have no plan to resolve this issue that has been building for some time and should come as no surprise, they should have planned for this. Normally, I would ask the Labour councillors in this chamber for their support in encouraging their state colleagues to plan for the requirement. However, to date, their only suggestion to manage the homeless issue is to suggest that residents or homeless people move into subpar vacant council buildings, which is an insult to those in need. Even worse, if you ask the Greens councillor for the GAB what his solution would be, you would have a range of ideas ranging from the illegal to the punitive. We stand in opposition to his extreme ideas which are quite simply dangerous and divisive, specifically the suggestion that people illegally squat in someone else's home. It beggars belief, putting people who are already vulnerable at risk of criminal charges. But we're getting on with the job and proud to say, despite the regular opposition and confected outrage from those opposite us, we are planning for and approving more homes for Brisbane residents. Mr Chair, later today we will see the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan come to the chamber for endorsement. This has been a hugely successful planning exercise that has received widespread support from the community, and I thank councillor Davis for her commitment and the hard work she has put in to engage her local community and develop a shared vision for the future of this growing suburb. This plan strikes the right balance between enabling housing supply while protecting our environment and the things that people love most in this area. It's an excellent achievement for council and for the local councillor, a plan that will deliver nearly 4,000 new homes for residents in this growing suburb. It speaks volumes when you consider other plans where opposition councillors have deliberately obstructed the process and used development and the supply of housing as a political tool for cheap point scoring. Mr Chair, you just have to look at their voting record on neighbourhood plans to know they've been peddling the wrong message to Brisbane residents for far too long. Rather than supporting the provision of new housing and enhancing economic activity, they have sought to misinform and distort the message, and their residents will be worse off in the future. In the last six years, those opposite have voted 14 of the 16 neighbourhood plans down. This is an astonishing 90% record. They voted, they voted against new homes for Brisbane residents.
Your colleagues have voted against it. Councillor Murphy, please.
They voted against new homes for Brisbane residents, they voted against housing affordability, they voted against economic activity. Today, they will have a chance to redeem themselves and support a plan that enables supply, enhances affordability and protects the environmental considerations in the area.
Councillor Allen, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in this chamber, you have admitted meeting with BMI to discuss their developments many times, I think you used the word many times. As you know, from complaints to Brisbane City Council, residents and schoolchildren at Acacia Ridge have been affected by dust, noise, trucks, filling in of Oxley Creek, and odour from the BMI site at Acacia Ridge over many years. Lord Mayor, have you raised, raised Acacia Ridge's residents' issues with the owners of BMI during your many meetings with them?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I wonder how many times councillor Griffiths has met with BMI, because the question that was asked was whether I had met with both parties involved in what we know as Brisbane's most well known neighbourhood dispute between two landholders in Combsley area. And the interesting thing is that this particular one has certainly involved many meetings with people like the deputy premier, ministers, difarmer, it has involved political fundraisers as well for the Labour Party, I understand, too. And so, this idea that somehow there's something wrong with trying to resolve an issue when the state government has tried to do the same thing in meetings with the same people is quite extraordinary. We know what the opposition's view is to meetings, we know councillor Cook, for example, refuses to meet with anyone who wants to build anything in her area. I assume that councillor Griffiths has the same approach, but I would simply ask, how many meetings has he had with BMI, or, you know, in terms of raising local issues, whether he has met with them? Because I've been asked by not only both sides of this particular debate, but by the state government to help resolve the issue. The Labour state government has asked us to help resolve this issue.
Point of order to you councillor Griffiths, point of order.
Yeah, the question specifically related to BMI and their Acacia Ridge site, so I would ask the Lord Mayor if he's, when he's met with BMI, whether he has discussed the Acacia Ridge site and all the issues that residents and council get about that site.
You're now debating the point of order, the preamble to the question was about the issues that were previously raised about meetings with BMI in relation to the Combsley site, the Lord Mayor is being relevant to the question.
Yes, I am, Mr Chair. It's interesting because when this question was asked, remember the own goal question that councillor Cook asked last time? Councillor Griffiths interjected at the time, oh, it's murky, it's murky. By saying that, he threw his own Labour state government under the bus, because if there's meetings that were murky, they've been in on those meetings too. And so, it. And so really, the allegations here that somehow stepping in to try and help resolve an issue, that the state government wants us to help resolve and we've been trying really hard to resolve and we've put forward some very sensible solutions here, that there's somehow something inappropriate about trying to resolve a big dispute like this? I would simply say that councillor Griffiths is reading this issue entirely incorrectly. But in terms of Acacia Ridge and the operation of a facility there, I would simply say this. If there is a business operating in the site and they are not meeting their obligations in terms of development approvals, in terms of environmental compliance, in terms of any kind of compliance, then I would expect that council compliance action would be taken or state compliance action would be taken. And so that is my simple position on this is if there is a business that's operating outside their approvals, then, then compliance action should be taken. It's as simple as that. And so my view on that is, is, is there non-compliance there? And if so, there should be appropriate compliance action taken. And so, you know, it is one thing for people to have a view on whether a business should be operating in an area. And I know many people have views on whether a business should be operating in particular areas. But the question is, are they operating in accordance with their approval conditions? Are they operating in accordance with state and council requirements?
Point of order to you, councillor Griffiths?
They don't, my understanding is they don't have an approval.
Councillor, that's debating the point of order. You can't debate the point of order.
They don't have approval and the application's been going on eight years.
You're raising issues outside the confines of raising a point of order. Are you finished, Lord Mayor? Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the Shriner Council is working hard to be Australia's most small business friendly council. Can you please update the chamber on the latest program of work?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hutton because I can assure you the Shriner Council is extremely proud of our strong track record on supporting local businesses. And that's local businesses in the suburbs, that's local businesses in the CBD. That's local businesses that are working with local residents and local businesses that are working with our visitors, friends and relatives that are coming from interstate and overseas. And that is all because we are absolutely determined to make sure our reputation as the most small business friendly in Australia has well and truly set in. And I am going to say, in the southern hemisphere or in the world, because
In the universe.
In the universe. Prove us wrong. You only have to look past performance to see that the future definitely does look bright when it comes to supporting our local businesses. Our city has managed the unique circumstances of COVID and emerged strong on the domestic and international scale. A situation that should be acknowledged and celebrated as a competitive advantage. We know earlier this year floods caused another setback and a great damage to some of our businesses and definitely to our city. But like the flood, the damage is temporary and we are already seeing promising signs of recovery whilst we remain committed to those still on the road to recovery. We have all the right ingredients for success with diverse economic development programs that offer genuine support for those in need. The Brisbane Business Hub opened in October 2020 and has grown from strength to strength with amazing results and feedback from business. Our suburban business hub, mirroring those efforts for businesses out in the burbs, utilizing space for remote working, workshops, events and meetings. Last year, we had a series of targeted digital marketing and visual, visual merchandising programs in seven local business areas with fifty-one, one-on-one business training opportunities out in the burbs. Our suburban pop-up shop front and shop front improvement projects targeted vacant tenancies in suburban precincts. And we supported startup and online businesses to try to get their hands into bricks and mortar models as well. Our local business partnership initiatives have just wrapped up in Oxford Street, Belinda and Belimba and Mount Cravat and offered a range of initiatives and support to businesses, including one-on-one coaching, promotional opportunities and business training. And we understand that businesses are working so hard, they've got their heads down and their bums up. And sometimes they just need a little bit of extra hands when it comes to working on their business, not just in their business. Brisbane is home to more than three hundred business precincts and they range in size from a few tenancies to a few hundred. And each precinct provides individual experience and role in our city's economy. With the rise of work from home and restricted travel over the past few years, there has been a strong shift in our consumer patterns, resulting in very big increases in local spend, which is great to see for those local shops. However, we are aware that many of these businesses are still recovering from the damage caused by snap lockdowns, longer lasting restrictions and of course then the February floods adding to the pain. Which is why we've developed a new programme that looks to combine some of all of the past initiatives, taking the learnings into previous successes. It's called the Growing Precincts Together Programme and it seeks to take a more hands-on and tailored approach to support key shopping precincts that are facing unique challenges. The first two precincts on the list for this year are two that were both severely hurt by lockdown and then the floods and that is Rosalie Village and Racecourse Road. Rosalie was once again devastated by the February floods and Racecourse Road has suffered long-term vacancies and business turnover for quite a few years. They've done a lot of things to no avail and we hope that the Growing Precincts Together Programme will be a framework of support, toolkits and resources to help these precincts recover and rebuild with confidence. Our dedicated economic development officers have been busy undertaking a deep dive into these precincts to better understand their unique offerings.
Councillor Johnston, please.
To understand their unique offerings, what the cause is of their vacancies and how we can use that cause, effect and opportunities to build on supporting these precincts. Utilizing data sources and insights through our city analytics office, analyze their retail mix, their primary customer base, spend data, social media presence and vacancy data over the past years to determine the best course of action tailored to suit. And it could be a combination of any of those past initiatives that I mentioned before or maybe a new offering, depending on what the needs of these first two specific investments are. We'll kick off with a series of engagement workshops with the business owners in these precincts and develop a precinct playbook that works under four key steps. Promote, support, refresh and activate. It's all about building confidence and resilience in these precincts. We can't undo the damage that's been done over the last two and a half years, but we want to build stronger and more resilient and we look forward to taking these programs out to other precincts across Brisbane in the future.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, will you today commit to installing the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge in addition to the Australian flag?
Lord Mayor?
We had a question before, Mr Chair, about whether this side of politics had supposedly run out of ideas. What we see here is the other side stealing ideas from other people. And we've seen, this is an idea they couldn't come up with themselves, but had to steal from New South Wales and Sydney. Now,
Please, councillors?
The Liberal government in New South Wales. Well, it's an interesting question because I have a number of times in the past investigated opportunities to put additional flag poles, bigger flag poles, new flag poles on the Story Bridge. And the response on every single occasion has been that it would be a very long and costly process involving potentially several million dollars, millions of dollars to, to do that. Now, everyone knows that I support the Australian flag, but everyone also knows that I support equally flying the Aboriginal and the Torres Strait Islander flag. And you know what? We even fly the Queensland flag as well. And every day, and when there's particular events, we make sure those flags are always flying in King George Square, behind me in the council chamber. Based on my direction, we are flying those flags. We, I do so in my office as well and we make sure that we give appropriate respect, not only to the Australian flag, but also the Aboriginal and the Torres Strait Islander flag as well. So our record is very clear on this. But it comes down to the simple thing of cost and doability on what is a heritage structure. And I would, I would simply, I would simply point out that, yeah, as we're going through the rebuilding and recovering, recovery process, as Labor councillors continue to complain that apparently they're not getting enough investment in the suburbs, would they support the expenditure of a couple of million dollars on the Story Bridge to fly additional flags? And so I, I know what would happen there. If they saw the bill, they would then accuse us of running a very expensive project that took money away from the suburbs. So I'm not going to play that game. Everyone knows, everyone knows that I support the flying of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flag because we are doing it every day at our facilities, where we have the flag poles installed, in this council chamber, in my office, we continue to do so. But I can say to councillor Cook that last week I met with the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders from across Brisbane, as I do a number of times each year. And this is not an issue that they raised with me. And there was ample time to raise any issues that they wanted to raise, but this is not an issue that they raised with me. Because they know we support the flying of the flag wherever practical. They know it. And you know what? I suspect that if you ask them, they would prefer to see a couple of million dollars invested into other programs as well. I suspect that would be the case. But it's certainly not something that the Aboriginal elders and Torres Strait Islander elders raised with me. So we certainly open, we have been open to flying more flags on the Story Bridge. We've investigated it. The cost was prohibitive. And I would also point out that for the very first time, we permanently fly an Aboriginal flag on one of our city cats. And this is something that councillor Murphy and I initiated with the launch of the Neville Bonner. It is, it is a, a great asset for our city and every day the Aboriginal flag is flown on the Neville Bonner city cat up and down the river. So nobody can question our commitment. Nobody can question our commitment. This is simply a matter of, is it doable on what is a heritage structure? And is the cost a feasible thing when you consider the other priorities? And as I said, this is not an issue that was raised by the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders with me.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Griffiths, point of order to you, councillor Cook?
Mr Chair, under section twelve subsection three, I move the suspension of standing rules to allow me to move the following motion. The Brisbane City Council commits to urgently installing the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge in addition to the Australian flag.
Seconded. Councillor Cook has moved a motion for the suspension of standing rules and that's been seconded. Councillor Cook, you have three minutes to establish the reason for bringing this forward at this time.
Thank you, Mr Chair. We have just asked the Lord Mayor if he will commit to installing the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge in addition to the Australian flag. He has said today that we are, and I quote, stealing ideas from other people. And he has no commitment to installing the flags at this time. He has also said today that he has investigated ideas for installing new and bigger flag poles. He has said that that would be a long and costly process.
Point of order to you, councillor Murphy?
I'm just wondering when we're getting to the urgency on this one.
Yes, councillor Cook, you need to establish why urgency is required. I think you're now debating your anticipated motion, but if you could establish why this is urgent now.
The, the Lord Mayor today has said that he doesn't have that commitment. We have just heard it. We say that, I'm sorry, Mr Chair, he says that he supports flying it, but apparently just not on the Story Bridge. So this motion is necessary today because there has been no commitment from the mayor today to fly all three flags currently.
Point of order to you, councillor.
I ask your consideration whether this is something that could have been put on as a motion before midday yesterday and not actually urgent.
We have, Mr Chair.
Excuse me, let me respond to the point of order. Yes, look, councillor Cook, you need to establish urgency and why you couldn't put it on the notice paper yesterday.
This motion could not come any earlier because we gave the Lord Mayor of this city today the opportunity to explain to this chamber and to the people of this city what his intentions were. He has now told us just now, we all heard it a couple of minutes ago, that he has no intention of doing this. It is too costly, he says. So this motion is necessary now. It could not have been put on the agenda earlier because we have only just heard this. He hasn't spoken about this previously in this place. Our opportunity to ask questions of the mayor comes during question time. We have asked the question, he has given his response and we are now bringing this motion today to consider for all councillors if they think flying all three flags is something that is important to us as a council and to this city. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. The motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules. All in favor of the suspension of standing rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cook, can you please read your motion?
Thank you, Mr Chair. That Brisbane City Council commits to urgently installing the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge in addition to the Australian flag.
Seconded. Will you circulate that motion?
Point of order, Chair.
A point of order to you, councillor.
Mr Chair, as per section forty-two two B of the meeting's local law two thousand and one, I move a procedural motion that the debate on the motion now before the meeting be adjourned until the conclusion of the business on today's agenda.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a procedural motion for the movement of this motion to the conclusion of today's agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor.
Just procedurally, I thought there had to be some debate of the motion. I have only moved the motion. I haven't even commenced debate.
It was the start of debate, yes, so.
I, I, I haven't said anything except move the motion, which was seconded.
So it, it had been moved and seconded? That is the commencement of the debate?
In that case, division.
Seconded.
So I, I don't think we can have a division on a procedural motion, can we? Yeah, okay. Okay, my apologies, okay. A division has been called on my ruling on the procedural motion. All in favor of the division, please say aye. No, so we're dividing, my apologies. Ayes to the, ayes to my right, noes to the left. Yes.
Point of order, Mr Chairman. Could I just clarify? Is this motion specifically about dissent?
Seconded.
I'm asking a question just to clarify. Is the motion from the opposition dissent against your decision?
The division is on whether we should adjourn? Claps, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being twenty in favor and seven against.
Thank you. Councillors, please resume your seats. That ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, twenty ninth of August, twenty twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, twenty nine, August, twenty twenty-two be adopted. Lord Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, before we move on to the reports here, I just wanted to, just wanted to talk about how we're lighting up the assets this week, as I always do, in support of some important community causes and events in the city. As we've just heard from councillor Howard, we are in the middle of Brisbane Festival or at the beginning of Brisbane Festival, actually. And throughout this week, our assets will be lit up in pink on, on multiple nights to celebrate the Brisbane Festival, council coming. A festival is proudly supported by both the Queensland government and the Brisbane City Council and long may be the case. Last night, the Tropical Dome and the Story Bridge were lit up in blue for Child Protection Week. And running from the Week and running from the 4th to the 10th of September, Child Protection Week focuses on the important values of children, including raising the issues of abuse and neglect. And tonight, the City Hall and the Soundgate Town Hall will be lit up in blue and purple to celebrate councillor Howard Big Sound Festival. Big Sound Festival has grown to be one of the biggest annual music events of its type in Australia, which is taking over Fortitude Valley and the precinct this month. Also tonight, the Story Bridge will be lit up in red and white to support Fly the Flag Day and that's run by Mates in Construction, a charity that was established in 2008 to reduce the high level of suicide among Australian construction workers. Their annual Fly the Flag Day brings construction workers together to promote an open conversation about mental health and suicide prevention. Tomorrow night, the Story Bridge will be lit up in blue, green and yellow to recognise Brazil's Independence Day. This day on the 7th of September celebrates Brazil's declaration of independence from the United Kingdom of Portugal in 1822. On Thursday night, the Story Bridge will be lit up in purple to support the eve of Brave Hearts Day. Brave Hearts Day is held annually during National Child Protection Week to unite Australians against the crime of child sexual abuse. The funds raised go towards eradicating, sorry, educating, empowering and protecting our kids and Brave Hearts do an amazing job in that particular role. On Friday night, City Hall will be lit up in blue for the Lord Mayor's Multicultural Business Awards Dinner, which is a, an opportunity to celebrate not only our great entrepreneurs in Brisbane, but our great multicultural business entrepreneurs. And there are so many of them and I'm looking forward to the event here in City Hall on Friday to acknowledge and honour our great multicultural business people. On Sunday night, City Hall will be lit up in red, white, blue and yellow to celebrate the Scandinavia Club's 150 years in Brisbane. And so the Scandinavian Club is the oldest continuing club in Australia, would you know? I'm pleased to confirm that round one of the community support category from the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants is now open and I want to thank those councillors who have gotten the message out. It's always interesting to see Labour councillors making the untrue claim that somehow grants are being cut, yet they're really actively promoting the grants that are on offer, that have been funded in the budget. It's amazing how they can run those two, two arguments together. It's like, look, apply for all this great funding. Oh, no, no, the LMP has supposedly reduced the funding, which is just not true, which is just not true. So certainly continue the work to encourage your community organisations to apply for those Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants. We mentioned earlier, and it was mentioned in the committee meeting as well from councillor Howard, that we have finalised and launched council's reconciliation action plan. And obviously that was one of the key topics of discussion when I met with the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders last week here in City Hall. And so there was a lot of good discussion about that and we're looking forward to implementing that plan. It is, the first plan is a two-stage plan or a two-year plan, which involves a range of recommendations, many recommendations which we'll be implementing. We will then update that plan in the lead-up to that two-year mark to go to the next iteration of that plan. And so I'm very excited about the opportunity to work with our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders and our community and also our council staff as well to implement this plan, which I think is a really positive step forward. Item A, excuse me, is the approval to rescind AP 197, Privacy Policy, Storage and Disposal of Registration Details for Couponless Parking Meters. Brisbane City Council was the first council in Australia in 2009 to use vehicle registration details to identify paid parking sessions. This was the first time a pay-by-plate system and mobile payment system had been used. At the time, both state legislation and council rules were not aligned to electronic transactions in this regard and to support this innovation, council introduced a corporate rule, AP 197 Privacy Policy, to facilitate this implementation. After seeking advice from City Legal regarding whether AP 197 was still a valid corporate rule and it should be, whether it should be rescinded, it was advised to rescind the policy and create a new policy, Privacy Procedure, Storage and Disposal of Registration Details for Couponless Parking Meters. The new policy was presented to the EMT on 4th of May and was endorsed, making the old corporate rule redundant and is being rescinded today. So the key takeaway is an old policy has been replaced with a new policy that better serves our needs and continues to protect the privacy of Brisbane residents and that is what's happening today. Item B is the Lindham Open Level Crossing Signalisation Upgrade and the subdivision of council land. We've been working cooperatively with the state and federal governments on an interim solution to the Lindham Open Level Crossing. We have landed on a good design which will see safety improved at this intersection. There are approximately 1,600 vehicles per day around the site with at least 10,000 vehicles crossing the open level crossing each day. And motorists are currently experiencing very poor travel times and long delays during peak period due to the operation of the boom gates and also there's been a range of near misses and crashes. We saw a tragedy in recent years where a motorist went around the boom gates and that resulted in a tragic fatality. And so the design changes to this intersection will improve safety significantly and also help with traffic flow as well. It will also take into account the needs of pedestrians and cyclists as well. And so we're working on this project cooperatively with the other two, two levels of government and this submission is about moving forward on some key elements of that project. Item C is a major amendment to the Brisbane City Plan, Brisbane, Bridgman Downs Neighbourhood Plan. And councillor Allen has already flagged this coming through and he's also flagged that this is an opportunity, if councillors do care about housing affordability, to support an increase in supply of housing in our city. We know that time and time again, when plans have come to this chamber, despite everything they might say about supporting affordable housing and doing something about housing affordability, they vote no nine times out of 10, or in fact 14 times out of 16. Now, will today mark the 15th time that they vote against the neighbourhood plan or will they start gradually to redeem themselves and vote for increased supply of housing?
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, will the Lord Mayor take a question about how much affordable housing there is in the Bracken Ridge neighbourhood plan?
Sorry councillor Johnston. Lord Mayor, will you take the question?
Probably about the same amount as in Tennyson Water, I'd suspect. Probably about the same amount in Tennyson Water. So the major amendment that's coming through is obviously the result of quite a significant process where community engagement was undertaken in late 2019, 2020 and also again in early 2022. And this plan strikes a balance between supporting new housing growth while preserving environmental and waterway corridors through the area. And so this is, I think, you know, one of the ways that we can help by increasing the supply of housing in our city at a time when it is drastically needed. Some people talk about, you know, illegally breaking into other people's homes and squatting. This is actually a sensible way of increasing housing supply and that will help improve affordability. As we've seen, supply and affordability are linked.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move an extension, seconded.
An extension of time motion has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As we've seen, supply and affordability are linked, there's an important correlation there and it, it always surprises me that we see some councillors consistently and regularly opposing new development and then suddenly surprised and outraged that there's a housing affordability issue. Suddenly surprised and outraged that there's a supply issue when it comes to housing. And then, and then encouraging a very punitive new tax to supposedly respond and then also encouraging people to break the law. So I, I am quite concerned that if we look at some of the policies or I guess responses that are being proposed here, that we are seeing a clear view that there are two types of people. There are people who it is assumed are greedy and should be punished and taxed and punished with more legislation, more requirements. And then there are other people who believe that the rules shouldn't apply to them and they can break into houses, they can steal from shops and supermarkets. It is quite extraordinary that we are seeing certain councillors breaking the community down in those two groups of people. People who the law doesn't apply to, according to one councillor, and then people who should be punished because they may own an investment property, for example, or for some reason their property might be vacant. So it is really quite concerning, we're seeing these kind of divisive, divisive, I guess, proposals put forward. Here, we have an opportunity, right here today, for people to support more supply in housing in Brisbane. There will be other opportunities in the future to support more supply, but we certainly will expect opposition councillors who care about housing supply and affordability to put their money where their mouth is and vote in support of this item. Item D is the Qualified State Interest Amendment to the Brisbane City Plan Local Heritage Places. This is something that we saw where the, we're having the inclusion of 52 new local heritage places to the city plan, which includes the Maruka War Workers Housing Estate, which also then adds 181 individual properties. So this has been discussed in the chamber before, it went up to the state, states ticked off on it and also agreed to allow it to be in place retrospectively from today, so retrospectively from which date?
2nd of August.
Councillor Allen, thank you. Which is good because that means the protection is in place already and that protects what is there and it also prevents anyone from doing the old demolition in the middle of the night, you know, in light of this. So we've, we've got the protection in place now and that is a good outcome. I thank the state government for supporting our initiative here. Item E is the Stores Board submission for a significant contracting plan for quarry mechanical, electrical maintenance services and quarry drilling and blasting services. As councillors would be aware, council owns and operates two quarries at Mount Coothera and Brokawba, as well as a construction materials recycling facility at Pine Mountain, which was a former quarry and now is used for the purpose of recycling quarry material, road, construction material. And as councillors would know, our quarrying activities and recycling activities are really important to the road maintenance and road building work that we do. And having these quarries ourself obviously gives us a bit of extra leverage in, you know, in addition to sourcing supplies and material from the private market. And so this is an area where we continue to operate our own quarries. They are at times supplemented by private quarry material where needed and this is about the maintenance of those quarries on an ongoing basis. And so continuing an arrangement and the item will extend the current quarry maintenance services arrangement by 28 days, which will align it with the end date of the quarry mechanical maintenance arrangement and will conclude on the 28th of February 2023 to bring the two contract components together for equal end dates. Once again, I trust all councillors will be supportive of this item. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you.
Can I just ask that the items be taken, serial item for voting with A, B and E together and C and D separate?
A, B.
B and E.
E, yeah.
And C and D separate and separate from each other, please.
C and D individually.
Yes, thank you.
Just for voting?
Just for voting.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you just repeat that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll repeat it. So voting together, A, B and E and C separate to D separate, okay. Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on these items before us today, all of them. Starting with clause A, the approval to rescind the AP 197s. This item seeks, we think, what's in the papers before us, to maintain the level of security of people's data who use Brisbane's parking meter system to retain that level of security as a procedure underpinned by a broader policy. This is about the management of data behind the scenes and it's important that that is done properly and we hope that bodies like the Audit Committee, for instance, in their own secretly looks at the efficacy of these policies and procedures in practice and how council manages these policies. Not that we'll ever find out about that because those items don't really come to council, but we're going to, we're going to support this item today, hoping that, that, that procedure is as robust as it needs to be to make sure that people's security is protected, people's information is protected. Clause B, the Lindham Open Level Crossing, this item is about supporting the project going forward, specifically looking at the resumptions, some resumptions and the subdivision of council property to enable the road realignment and signalisation. This project is the best solution in the absence of the removal of the grade level crossing. So what we understand is significantly lower cost than an overpass and the project will significantly boost the safety of motorcyclists, pedestrians and commuters and is a good example of all three levels of government working together to get a solution that is innovative in the face of what otherwise might be a $300 million project and still achieve some great community benefit. So we'll be supporting this item before us today. Clause C is the major amendment, the Bridgman Downs Neighbourhood Plan. And when this plan last came to the council chamber, we supported that going out to consultation and have been eagerly awaiting the results. And like many in that community out there, we are disappointed but not surprised with the outcome. The biggest issue that locals raised in the consultation was the lack of protection for remnant bushland in the Mountains to Mangroves corridor and for the protection of waterways supporting some pretty unique local biodiversity in that part of Brisbane. Hmm, it's always a constant theme, people want that protected. Now, the refusal of the development at 415 to 417 Beckett Road is currently, currently, currently being defended by council and the Planning and Environment Court. Let's see how long and rigorous that defence is because what we have seen in recent days is another amendment to that, which still includes a service station, still includes a childcare centre on that side, still includes townhouses and units on that side, where it is not appropriate. And residents are right to worry because development out in that part of the world has been rampant and has been occurring in the absence of a well-thought-out plan and in the absence of the kind of infrastructure that is required to support that kind of development being successful in a community. Now, we've always said that increasing density and housing choice is a good thing when it is supported by good infrastructure. Residents in this neighbourhood plan area have said they wanted better parks, they wanted better footpaths, they wanted better transport, they wanted better drainage, they wanted better roads that don't get clogged with cars parking on either side and, yeah, better suburbs is what people are asking for out there and they also wanted critical habitat protected. But this LNP administration and their local LNP councillor, councillor Tracy Davis, have said, too bad, that is not in this plan. An interesting approach has also been taken, has taken place in this neighbourhood plan as well, Chair, which highlights this Lord Mayor's hypocrisy. For months, he has been standing up here and accusing opposition councillors of not supporting affordable housing because we have voted against some of his appalling neighbourhood plans. He's said it again today several times. Well, if you look at the fine print in this plan before us today, one of the most significant changes from the draft plan was this. In item three, section 7225, purpose 3B, it previously read, multiple dwellings are not accommodated in the low-density residential zone, including where in a precinct or a potential development area. Fair enough. It now reads, multiple dwellings are not accommodated in the low-density residential zone or a potential development area. dwellings are not accommodated in the low-density residential zone or emerging community zone, including where in a precinct or a potential development area. So this, we read, is in response to a submission, one submission.
One submission.
One submission. So this Lord Mayor, this Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrinna, and the local councillor for the McDowell Ward, councillor Tracy Davis, has now ruled out multiple dwellings in the emerging community zone in this LNP ward based on one submission. Hypocrisy writ large. Everywhere else in this city, emerging community land can be rezoned to multiple dwellings where appropriate, where it's supported by appropriate infrastructure, but not here. But not here. No. So in this community, the Lord Mayor is ruling out housing choice. In this community, the Lord Mayor is ruling out one of the most affordable types of housing. But why? Why? Out here in the McDowell Ward? Is he doing that? He's talked a very big game in the last couple of months, and when he said he only wanted to see affordable housing in labour wards, we thought he was blowing off a little bit of steam. But this proof, this is proof here today in black and white, that his political interference in the planning system knows no bounds, Chair, and his hypocrisy knows no bounds as well. This neighbourhood plan looks to be the worst of both worlds. It doesn't do enough to protect biodiversity and bushland in areas that are critical, and it fails in other areas that would support higher density with increased community infrastructure, with the kind of things that people said they wanted to see with higher density living in that part of the world. Better footpaths, better transport options, better parks, protection of the unique biodiversity in that part of the world, with a plan that actually delivers for that community. But under this LNP administration, those people out there are simply not going to get it. And we won't be supporting this item. No, it didn't happen in Polara, that's for sure. Clause D is the Qualified State Interest Amendment to City Plan 2014, Local Heritage Places. Now, some of these items in here are from submissions from the Heritage Advisory Committee, some have been identified through other planning processes. We now see the inclusion of areas, areas instead of just places, which allows the significant areas of heritage to be protected, like the Maruka War Estate. It's important for a city like ours to balance the need for increased housing stock in places that are appropriately serviced by infrastructure, but also protecting the unique character and heritage of our city. We will be supporting this item. Clause E, the Stores Board Submission, the Significant Contracting Plan for this quarry mechanical and electrical maintenance services. We think it's reasonable, and we have said this on record, that contractors use for specialist work, work that's not ongoing basic council work, is reasonable. And having explosive experts, for instance, is important, and engaging them this way is appropriate. However, what we don't support is the increasing use of temporary labour hire workers for basic ongoing work. Now, in the absence of a permanent workforce, we're seeing more and more use of temporary labour hire workers. We've heard about quarry workers, specifically on this issue, that are permanent employees of council that are now working alongside temporary labour hire workers doing the exact same job. Not explosive specialists, but general quarry workers. Now, that really doesn't instill a sense of job security or pride in your workforce for this administration. There's an increasing use of labour hire workers at sites like the Mount Cootha Quarry, and this divides the workforce. It's not a good thing. We support contracting where it is appropriate and not where it's in terms of ongoing council work. Because we know from experience that in the long term, rate payers don't get good value for money. They see their rates going up to support these deliberate tactics from an LNP administration to divide a workforce but get less services out in the suburbs of Brisbane. So on this specific item, we'll be supporting this, but our broad opposition to contracting out and temporary labour hire workers doing basic council work stands.
Thank you, Councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just rise to speak to items A, excuse me, A, B and C. Can I begin by making a few notes about item A, which is the rescission and reaplication of the privacy policy around the storage and disposal of vehicle registration details for our, our on-street parking meters. So that is about ensuring that our, the technology and that the maintenance of that information is dealt with in an up-to-date and appropriate manner. As people put their details into those computers, we want to assure people that it is not stored for a significant amount of period and it is protected and that that information is kept private. So that's what that's about. It is about maintaining a high standard and about respecting the privacy of people who do use that particular service. I also speak to item B, the Lindham Open Level Crossing, and the seeking of support to proceed with the necessary resumptions to continue that particular project. The project comes in, I suppose, three stages, if you want to think of it that way. The makesafe project, which is complete, which is in response to a, to two fatalities sadly at that particular location. The crossing was an unusual diagonal style, too close to the station, too long in its sweeps. We have corrected that, elongated boom gates, fabricated concrete build-outs, a whole change to the line marking to try and make that safer. And in my opinion, it is safer, but we do have a better alternative, which is of course stage two, which is what we're discussing here, which is sometimes referred to as the perpendicular option or the straight option, which is the shortest possible distance across. It is some distance up the train line. Disappointingly, we are required to proceed with some private resumptions to get the space required to do that turn, to do, excuse me, to do that particular upgrade. We are seeking council approval to proceed there. The new project will be safer again compared to the last one and provide what we believe is a long-term safe at-level solution. So we are confident that if this proceeds, the area will have a safe crossing in that area for some decades and will delay the need for a very expensive, potentially $300 million open level crossing removal, the delay of the need for that particular project for some decades. So that is why we are of the view that this particular work needs to proceed. We are working with the state government, DTMR, QR. We're also working with the federal equivalents, and there has been a tripartite funding arrangements. The project, like many projects, is always a bit more expensive than we had first thought. When we began, when we began this one, when you were in this role, Mr Chair, it was before the pandemic and recession escalations of price. But that being said, we remain committed to that project, and we seek support today to proceed with those necessary and critical resumptions that will ensure that that project continues and is achieved properly. On item C, I just, it was interesting to hear some of the comments about the Bridgeman Downs Neighbourhood Plan. You know, I remember many years ago, we used to talk about neighbourhood planning in this place, and there was a particular memo that was often discussed. It was called the Stuart Fyffe Memo. And Stuart Fyffe was a staff member to the former deputy mayor, David Hinchcliffe. And in the memo, it said, the Labour Party policy on neighbourhood planning should be to pump up expectations of what can be delivered in a neighbourhood plan to far beyond what can be delivered by council, and, and then use that to cudgel the then Lord Mayor Newman and the Liberals in council. That was effectively what the memo said. And I thought, gosh, it's been like 15 years. Labour must have changed their position on neighbourhood plans in that intervening period. But if you were to listen to the opposition leader today, clearly his view is to pump up the expectations of what can be delivered through what's a planning exercise, rile up individuals in that area, and then blame the local councillor for delivering things that were never within the scope of the proposal. Look, the, the people of Bridgeman Downs, in my view, have dealt genuinely with the local councillor and the council to achieve an excellent outcome for them and the whole city. All of the comments that I heard regarding Bridgeman Downs earlier indicate a person who has never been to Bridgeman Downs or is hostile to people from Bridgeman Downs, or both. That's basically it. I know the north-western suburbs very well, and I know people from Bridgeman Downs very well. And I would also say that the, the housing range, the range of houses available for individuals in that area is pretty varied. And in fact, that was one of the prompts for the neighbourhood plan, because there was a lot of lifestyle blocks, a lot of large, I guess, small farm lots out there still, even in these recent years, that were being converted to townhouses but didn't have the supporting road infrastructure. And so what it was about, was about cleaning up and tidying up what that EC land was actually about. And then, and then making sure that the appropriate level of townhouses were built in that area, because there are quite a few already, and that was causing a little bit of discomfort. And to suggest that, that this area is about, this plan protects the area from townhouses reflects that this person has never been to Darian Street, has never been to Albany Creek Road, has never been anywhere near the northern parts of Beckett Road. That's just silly. So this is about making sure that this, that this area grows properly and respects a whole range of housing types and respects the wishes of that particular community in a realistic and genuine way. So can I just recommend all three, A, B and C, to this council?
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. Rise to speak mainly on item C, the Bridgeman Downs Neighbourhood Plan. And I must say, I'm a little disappointed that the tone of debate has simply been quite a shallow and unnuanced for more housing or against more housing. When we all know that neighbourhood planning is much more complicated than that, and that there, there, in this plan, there are some good elements and there are some really bad elements. And my task, I guess, as a councillor is to decide whether, whether I think the, the good outweighs the bad. But there's a few, few problems here specifically with the processes around neighbourhood planning and rezoning. And the first is that council is basically handing over a lot of free money to certain landowners, but the general public is not getting enough back in return to pay for the, the public infrastructure and the services and facilities that will be needed to cater for that population growth. So when the council takes a block of rural zone land and rezones it for residential suburban sprawl, that, that rezoning change is immediately increasing the value of the land, sometimes by millions and millions of dollars. But the landowner who's lucky enough to own that block of land at the moment that the rezoning happens, they don't have to contribute any additional funds into the council revenue streams to pay for the road upgrades or the extra, extra infrastructure that we need to cater for that growing population. Similarly, if you've got some low-density residential land, and as is happening in one or two places within this neighbourhood plan, that low-density residential land is being rezoned for neighbourhood centre, again, the land value is increasing dramatically. But even if at some point in the future those sites are actually redeveloped, the infrastructure charges the developer will pay will be very small. We're talking like 20K per dwelling, or 28K in the case of a three-bedroom dwelling, will be very, very small compared to the actual cost of delivering new infrastructure in those areas. So there's a mismatch between the cost of delivering infrastructure to cater for new, new population growth and the actual increased density in these neighbourhoods. I think there are quite a few areas of Bridgeman Downs that do need to densify. And I think there are a few areas where the council has been right to restrict development, particularly on environmental grounds. But I'm not convinced that the council administration has got the balance quite right with this plan. And I, I think there's a real missed opportunity to secure and protect more of those wildlife corridors, and in particular to prevent more of that established, established vegetation on private lots from being cleared. Because we don't want more suburban sprawl car-centric development in places like Bridgeman Downs. We want well-designed, medium-density development that's supported by public infrastructure, supported by good public transport, is close to the appropriate facilities and transport corridors, et cetera. So this particular plan of development that's being proposed with this plan, I think is unsustainable and replicates some of the most negative aspects of old-school suburban sprawl planning, where you say to a developer, yeah, you can carve up this old block of farmland and put in a bunch of houses, but no, we're not going to have better pedestrian crossings, we're not going to have the public transport to move people around, et cetera, et cetera. And the LNP councillors will get up and say, but that's not what a neighbourhood plan's for. A neighbourhood plan isn't an infrastructure plan. Yeah.
Councillor Wines, please. Councillor Wines. Councillor Wines.
I've touched a nerve now, haven't I?
No, 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 Councillor Wines.
Anytime, anytime you want to have a meeting with me, I would love to sit down and chat to you about neighbourhood planning and infrastructure provision. But the point is here that the process itself is wrong. The process itself is wrong. It is not appropriate to rezone an entire set of suburbs for different styles of development without, at the same time, allocating the funding and having a clear and detailed plan to provide the infrastructure. If you just rezone the land for new development without allocating sufficient funding to play for the infrastructure, we end up with the same problem that's already plaguing in many parts of our city, where the, the provision of local pedestrian crossings, the provision of libraries and parks and sports facilities is lagging well behind the pace of development. The other point I wanted to make though, and maybe this is less relevant to some of the people currently running the system, but maybe is important for some of the Labour councillors and LNP councillors who'll still be here post-March 2024, which is to think seriously about how we use rezoning to encourage and facilitate the construction of new housing. And what I suspect is happening, and this has been reinforced through conversations I've had with property market economists and with academic researchers in the, in the field of zoning and urban planning, is that this continual hodgepodge ad hoc approach of rezoning different parts of the city for new development is not actually contributing to a consistent and predictable pipeline of supply, and it's not actually facilitating new development in the areas where it's most needed. So let's say, for example, let's imagine you're a property developer or a land speculator, and you own a big block somewhere along the main road that was previously a single detached dwelling, but you're thinking about whether you should redevelop that for some medium-density apartments. And maybe for us as council, we actually want that block to redevelop as medium-density because it's near the public transport and near the shops, et cetera. But if you know that every five years, the council's going to come back and rezone again for high-density development, you're making that choice. Oh, do I develop it now? Do I redevelop this block now? Or do I wait five, 10 years and cross my fingers that it's going to be rezoned for even higher density development in the future? And that's what a lot of developers and speculators are doing through suburbia at the moment. They've already got these blocks of land-
Point of order, Mr Chair. Excuse me, just a moment. Point of order, Councillor Wines.
Councillor Sri take a question?
I'd welcome it.
Will you take a question?
Councillor Sri began his comments by-
Sri Ranganathan.
Sri Ranganathan, began his comments today by criticizing shallow and trite arguments about housing. How come the bulk of his speech has been shallow and trite arguments about housing?
I'm not sure that's a-
I don't think that was a very good faith question. I don't think the arguments I am making are shallow or, or trite. I think they're substantive points that are based on academic research, that base-
Councillor Wines, please.
I'm, I'm not sure I said anything about you, mate. But look, we, we can have a chat about it. Like I said, always happy to sit down and chat to you about infrastructure provision. I've, I've written to you on many occasions and asked for meetings about the shortfall of infrastructure in our city, haven't had those meetings. So if you want to have a respectful conversation, let's do it. But all I see at the moment is me raising serious and legitimate concerns about the neighbourhood planning process, and LNP councillors acting all offended and like we're like undermining the future direction of the city, et cetera. Let's have a rational debate about this stuff. What I was saying is that the pattern of periodically rezoning sites for higher and higher density development right across the city is actually-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Tumi.
I think Councillor Sri, Sri Ranganathan is actually misleading the chamber.
Is that a point of order?
In such a way, in such a way, in such a way-
Sit it down. That's not a valid point of order.
Councillor Tumi.
He wants to have a rational debate, but yet brings irrational ideas into his chamber.
Councillor Tumi, that is not, that is not, excuse me, I'll deal with it. It's not a relevant point of order, Councillor Tumi.
No, it's not. Just, God, this is pathetic.
Councillor Sri Ranganathan, you've got the floor, please, continue.
If you don't agree, let's, let's have a conversation about it. But, 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 but look, as I was saying, if, if you're a developer and you've got a choice between developing now, when the site's zoned for two stories, or waiting because you think in a few years the site might be rezoned for five stories, you delay. You just sit on that property and wait. And that's happening across Brisbane's middle and outer suburbs, where there are neighbourhoods that do need to densify. But the failure to plan appropriately and to give the sector long-term certainty is actually slowing down development. And the same thing is certainly happening in the inner city, where the council's patchy and, as I said, ad hoc approach to periodically rezoning development is not encouraging an, an increase in supply and new development, it's actually slowing it down. And I, I really want the LNP councillors in this place to reflect seriously on this. This is not me saying this. This is like well-established in, in, in the economic literature, that when you, when you periodically just upzone without a cohesive and, and long-term strategy for the growth of the city as a whole- for the growth of the city as a whole, you don't encourage new development in the areas where we most need new development. You encourage areas in the development where it is most profitable in the short term to develop. And that's an important but subtle distinction. Because right now, the places that it's most profitable for developers to build new housing are down on the floodplains, where they can buy a cheap old warehouse, knock it down, put in a high rise and they, they're, they're absconded long before the next flood. So they don't actually have to deal with the ramifications of building on the floodplain. But that's where they're building right now because that's where it's cheapest and most profitable to build. And we've rezoned those areas to allow that development. That's council's mistake. But in, because it's so cheap and profitable to build in those areas where we don't actually want new development to be going, in my view, these areas where the council is hoping to densify and where the city planning team is trying to encourage new development are not developing as quickly as perhaps many would think they need to. And that's because of the council's patchy and inconsistent approach to rezoning. So if we want to encourage new development in certain areas, it's not enough to just rezone the land and give the current landowner a gift of millions of dollars of additional real estate value. You actually need to invest in the public transport infrastructure and the community facilities upfront so that we can catalyse the, the development that we need in those areas. And of course, as much as possible, it should be public housing, not private residential development, which is unaffordable for people on low incomes.
Counselor, your time has expired. Further speakers? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items C and D. But first, item C, the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. This project began in 2019 as both council and the community identified a need to update the planning provisions in this particular area and to safeguard the area's future as it continued to grow. It's a uniquely beautiful part of Brisbane with a distinctive subpropical green and leafy character and is quintessentially the suburban lifestyle. It combines city convenience with bushland beauty. Over three separate rounds of community consultation occurred and we asked residents to tell us what they valued most about Bridgeman Downs and what opportunities they saw to better their suburb. From the feedback received, it was clear that preserving bushland and waterways was a high priority for the area. The second very clear and important theme to emerge was that many of the residents felt that recent housing development, specifically townhouses and apartments, were not consistent with the green leafy nature of the area and they did not want to see this in future plans. That's notwithstanding obviously that there is significant town housing development out there already. This plan is about finding the right balance between supporting growth and enabling supply while protecting our natural environment. The neighbourhood plan area has identified four clear residential and environmental precincts to help manage growth. To the east of Bridgeman Road, residents can expect to see residential housing estates similar to what is currently there. Labelled the Bridgeman Downs residential precinct, this area will accommodate almost all of the additional housing required to meet growth targets. To the west, in the established acreage areas of Bridgeman Downs, we don't expect to see much change anytime soon. And there are additional planning controls in place to ensure important bushland and waterway corridors are protected and enhanced. The north west Rogan Road South precinct sets clear parameters around the extent of change and growth. Having significant environmental values across the precinct where single homes can be accommodated, larger lot sizes averaging 1,000 square metres are required. To the south east, we have the Beckett Road precinct. This area required extensive planning consideration and detailed design work to strengthen the protections around significant ecological corridors while carefully facilitating the right kind of housing in the right locations. The community can be confident that the Shriner Council has done absolutely everything we could possibly do to protect this important and valued environmental corridor. And I'm pleased to hear that this planning direction has already carried weight in the PNE Court against the Beckett Road development appeal. The plan rezones this Beckett Road corridor from what was emerging community to the environmental management zone. And councillor Cassidy, Cassidy made much of the emerging community zone. So what we've got here is some emerging community land that is being rezoned to environmental management zoning, which is a good outcome. Also, some of the remaining emerging community land was not suitable for multiple dwellings because it wasn't close to a centre and it wasn't close to public transport, which is required under city plan. Now, the notion that we, um, aren't supporting additional and, you know, significant additional housing in this area is demonstrably wrong. We know that this is a growing area and the amendments to the neighbourhood plan as proposed will provide for nearly 4,000 additional new homes as the plan takes shape and is delivered upon. Now, in contrast, the Sandgate District neighbourhood plan, when it finally landed after virtually no support from the local councillor, will in fact probably yield something closer to 400 new homes. So you can see that from a supply provision perspective, the Banya, the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan is clearly, is clearly going to deliver new housing. So there is a delicate balance between.
Point of order, Counselor Ranganathan.
Will the council take a question? No, not going to take a question? No, okay.
There is a delicate balance between facilitating housing supply in the right location to meet the needs of our growing city while ensuring our valued bushland, native habitats and the leafy character of our suburbs is preserved for generations to come. Now councillor Cassidy and councillor Sri Ranganathan have also made much of the infrastructure requirements. And it's worth bearing in mind that infrastructure will be developed through the LGP process. There is a LGP amendment one B coming through that will in fact capture the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. Now, I would like to thank councillor Davis, who's obviously contributed mightily to this work. She's worked hard with her local community and certainly have, have achieved an outcome that we believe the, the community will be very happy with. It's the right balance of protecting the environmental values of the area but also providing the housing that's needed in the future. The plan will now go to the minister for final state interest checks, seeking approval for adoption into city plan. And I commend item C to the chamber. I'll move on to item D, which is the, the heritage related amendments to city plan. This captures more than 50 new local heritage listings identified through a range of mechanisms. This is through community nominations, through neighbourhood planning projects and through council's ongoing heritage investigations and research. It also includes the amendments to follow the TLPI introduced over the Maruka War workers estate. We know that Brisbane residents value the city's heritage and clearly we do too. It is one of the largest heritage amendment packages we have put through council and is a significant step towards protecting more of Brisbane's unique heritage. The listings in this package represent a wide range of buildings, structures, landscapes and elements of our past that are special to Brisbane. From a mid century church, a garden developed by a notable horticulturalist, an early 1880s horse stable, a post World War Two commercial building and early infrastructure associated, associated with Brisbane's tramway network. The Shriner Council has a long and celebrated track record of protecting heritage and character in our city with over 1,500 local heritage places on the register and more being added all the time. We work closely with the experts on our independent heritage advisory committee to ensure the history and significance of these places are accurately captured and detailed and to inform any future development requirements. This package will make its way to the state government for their first state interest check before consulting with the community and property owners. I look forward to seeing this package returned to the chamber and these heritage places permanently protected. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers?
Counselor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on items C and items D. I think it's fair to say now that we can see that the planning neighbourhood protection racket for LNP councillors has been expanded to the northern suburbs of Brisbane. Up until now, it's been the sole domain of councillor Krista Adams and her special sweetheart deals to protect the residents of, or, or, well, to protect her position against the residents of Taragindi. But it would seem as though this protection racket's being extended to the northern suburbs of Brisbane. And.
Point of order to you, Deputy.
I asked for a ruling on the comment and impugning motive of protection racket in this comments.
Yeah, councillor Johnston, I would ask you to restrict your comments to the matter before us and not to be making, uh, comments that might be regarded as defamatory or impugning motive. Councillor Johnston, please.
Unlike what the Lord Mayor said about me earlier, I don't support the Brazilian Homes Fund. Yeah. So the protection racket's been extended to the.
I ask you to refrain from using those words, please, because they're not relevant to this point.
Deals for the LNP Liberals in this Brisbane City Council have been extended to the northern suburbs of Brisbane. And we see that here today and we know it is the case because of what the Lord Mayor tells us and what he does. The Lord Mayor wants you to listen to what he says. His council supports affordable housing. His council supports greater density. His, his council says that there's got to be more houses all over Brisbane, all over Brisbane. He says there's got to be more public housing. He's been out there saying all these people should be shoved out there into Pinken Bar and into the demountables and that's where all the people should be going. When it comes to actually doing something that he is responsible for, the story is completely different. And what we see in this neighbourhood plan is extraordinary protections of large residential low density blocks in the northern suburbs of Brisbane. And where are they located? In an LNP ward. Probably across two LNP wards, I'd be guessing. So the Lord Mayor wants you to listen, the Lord Mayor wants you to listen what he says, but really you need to look at what he is doing. In this neighbourhood plan, based on my understanding of it, there's not going to be anything higher than two stories anywhere in this area. Nothing over two stories. There is no LMR three. I don't even think there's any LMR, but it's very hard to tell with those colours. I don't think there's any, even any LMR. I don't believe that there is any LMR three. There's certainly no medium density. There's no high density. We're not seeing any of the things that are being forced into south side communities that flood, forced into south side communities that flood. None of that applies in LNP wards. And, you know, we've got Butterwood and Melth in his mouth, the, the planning chairperson. He stands up, oh, there'll be 4,000 new homes out here. Yeah, right. I'll believe that when I see it. Meanwhile, they'll all be on their 1,000 square metre blocks. Or as this points out, they'll be between 400 square metres and 700 square metres. I've got blocks in character residential one where this council is allowing 230 square metre sized blocks, which is completely contradictory to the city planning scheme, but this council is allowing it. Meanwhile, the protection racket for the LNP continues to run. Why is the Lord Mayor not doing what he says that everyone else should do? And that is make sure that there is a diversity of housing supply in this city. He has stood up in this place and he has said, we're doing affordable housing. We're doing greater density. No, you're not. And he has week after week, even in his budget speech, he said some of the most outrageous things that I think Lord Mayor's ever said in here, and there's been a few. He stood up and he blamed, he blamed the Labour councillors, myself and councillor Sri Ranganathan for blocking neighbourhood plans that were all about growth. Here's a neighbourhood plan with no growth. And it's to protect, it is to protect the LNP councillors. Well, come on councillor Davis, stand up and you tell us how many stories are going to be in your area. Because 200 residents marched in the street in Sherwood and put in submissions and we've got six stories. One resident puts in a complaint over your way and you get two stories. So please, please share with us how high buildings are going to be in your ward because the plan says it's two stories. Meanwhile, I don't see any of these areas identified as public housing or affordable housing. I don't see any of that. Perhaps you can tell us where the affordable housing's going to be out here. Um, I guess on these giant 700 square metre blocks that we've got out there, we're going to get the, uh, we're going to get the affordable housing people coming along and building $2 million houses and, and popping somebody in there who desperately needs a house. I'm sure that's going to be affordable and achievable. Because what this plan does is preserve an area of Brisbane where there is the opportunity for planning to do all the lot things the Lord Mayor says should be happening in this city that he will not do. And instead, he's going to force that greater density into suburbs, older suburbs where it is much harder to retrospectively fit the infrastructure that is needed to do it. Or worse still, like out in my area, where you don't get any money for infrastructure, but you get the six story buildings. Or like in councillor Sri's area, where you get 20 story buildings that flood. Flood free land available for development to meet the Lord Mayor's stated claim of making sure this city has enough housing supply. He's not even here. He is not even here. This plan shows that there is one standard for the LNP and there is another standard for anybody who is not an LNP councillor. It started with councillor Krista Adams when she got bailed out by $6 million for three residential blocks of land. And it is now continuing on the north side of Brisbane where this council is not even considering low to medium density or medium density where it is appropriate. I think that the double standard and the hypocrisy of this Lord Mayor are on full display today. He is bringing forward a neighbourhood plan that fails to achieve the things that he goes out and talks about, fails to achieve them. And on a day when he stood up on radio this morning and said, oh, we should have all those poor people out there at Pinken Bar in the demountables. I'm sorry, Lord Mayor, where's your advocacy for affordable housing in Bracken Ridge or Bald Hills? Areas where I suspect some sort of affordable housing might be really worthwhile. There isn't any. Or what about a little bit of medium density to say, take the burden off Cherm Side, which apparently you can't get out of the car park for? What about a little bit of that? No, we don't see any of that. We see protection, we see protection for LNP councillors in the northern suburbs of Brisbane, just like in the western suburbs. I will never forget Margaret DeWitt standing up and being outraged about the small lot blocks in Pullan Vale, which were 1,000 square metres, outraged by the small lot blocks. I don't think she had any idea what a small lot block is, but. I think what we are seeing today is the full extent of the hypocrisy of this LNP council. They will do one things to protect the seats that they want to preserve and they will do exactly the opposite. Over intensify development, put development into the wrong areas, fail to protect character, fail to invest in infrastructure, fail to invest in the necessary drainage and facilities that are needed in every other neighbourhood plan areas other than their own. And I can say that's what's been done in my area, in both neighbourhood plans. There's been zero response to the community in Sherwood, Graceville neighbourhood plan. And there was zero response in the Dutton Park Fairfield neighbourhood plan. It is appalling to see what this administration will do to protect its own. And as councillor Allen very helpfully just shared with us, there's a whole LGP amendment coming through to pop all the infrastructure into Bracken Ridge and Bald Hills because they're getting a few extra houses. Meanwhile, there's thousands of units that have gone into suburbs like mine or Forest Lake. We can't even get a drain cleaned out six months after the floods. This neighbourhood plan shows just how far the LNP hypocrisy extends, what they will do to protect themselves. And I actually feel sorry for the people of Bracken Ridge because they did actually want a few things. They did actually want a few things in here and they're not really getting.
Oh, excuse me. Point of order, councillor Hammond.
I can't stand this anymore. Bracken Ridge is not mentioned in this report. It's actually Bridgeman Downs.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Hammond. Yep. Counselor, please conclude.
Yeah, yeah. She's just trying to chew up my time because she doesn't like it because we're just about done. But we know that councillor Adams is going to whip his, uh, infrastructure in here to support this neighbourhood plan too.
Your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor McCoy.
Thank you Chair. I rise to talk about item D, the qualified state interest amendment to Brisbane City Plan 2014. And I promise Chair, I won't yell at you and I won't yell at any other councillors because I think it's totally unnecessary. I welcome the Shriner Council's moves to tighten rules around local. Just for the minutes that's councillor Johnson interjecting me.
You know councillors please, not across the floor.
That's councillor Fiona Cunningham.
councillor Hammond and councillor Johnson, please stop interjecting across the floor. Councillor Mackay, you have the floor.
It's important to remember it's my turn. I welcome the Shruna council's moves to tighten rules around the local heritage places and the reason is this. You may remember last year when I spoke in this place about homes on Archer Street in Tuwong. Forty Archer Street was a classic interwar Tudor-style home on the banks of the Brisbane River with expansive views to the city. The house, named Lyndon Lee, in Archer Street, was one of a handful of remaining interwar character homes on the street. Sadly Forty Archer Street was demolished despite our best efforts. Council had acted to tighten up the protection for character residential homes, but Lyndon Lee's demolition was at the hands, well the fate was at the hands of the P&amp;E Court judge. I had worked closely with the deputy mayor when she was still the planning chair on this topic. We tried everything we could, but ultimately council's decision was overturned and the demolition went ahead. In fact, for the purpose of history, I will quickly restate the demolition history of Forty Archer Street. On the 28th of June 2017, the application was lodged for full demolition. On the 15th of August 2017, demolition application was refused by council. On the 12th of September 2017, an appeal was lodged with the P&amp;E Court. On the 14th of April 2019, the P&amp;E Court overturned our decision and approved the demolition. Council appealed the decision of the Planning and Environment Court to the Queensland Court of Appeal. That appeal was unsuccessful. There are still a few historic homes on Archer Street and under the Qualified State Interest Amendment, I look forward to showing my grandchildren these homes. This amendment is good for Tuwong and good for the people of Brisbane.
Thank you. Further speakers councillor Cumming.
Okay. I'd like to speak briefly in relation to item B, the Lindham Level Crossing. This is a really important project for the Wynn and Manley Ward and part of the Doughboy Ward. It's, this also is a project which shows a great level of cooperation, continuing cooperation between all three levels of government. While the state and federal government are providing most of the capital, the Brisbane City Council is providing a lot of technical expertise and is in charge of the project. And I believe they're doing a good job. I'm satisfied that the two full resumptions and four-part resumptions are necessary and I hope that the owners get a good price. The Lindham Level Crossing is a busy intersection, being close to the large and growing Iona College, Catholic school of nearly 2,000 students. Thankfully, this school has one of the highest usages of public transport in the city, mainly catching the train to the school. And so not all 2,000 boys get dropped off at school. The Level Crossing is also heavily used by people getting to work in the morning. It's close to the industrial estates at Hammett, the port of Brisbane. And it's also close to getting over to the north side for workers, blue collar workers who work on the north side and people who work at the airport as well. So it's heavily used for those purposes as well. And so large numbers of people go across that crossing every day. There have been two fatalities, which has been quite tragic, and the intersection needs to be made safer. The latest proposal stops a right-hand turn, which is one of the real problems of the area, a right-hand turn from busy Sibley Road across Kynewa Road and over the rail Level Crossing. And people used to rush that intersection to try to get over there before other cars came through. Now they'll have to turn left from Sibley Road, go down the road and then do a U-turn. And I think that'll discourage a lot of people from taking that turn that otherwise would have been done. I strongly support the continued progress of this project.
Thank you councillor. Further speakers councillor Davis.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr Chair. And I rise to speak on item C, the major amendment to the Brisbane City Plan 2014, the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. And Mr Chair, as I've said many times before in this chamber, Bridgeman Downs is a wonderful place to live and to work and to raise a family. And it has a very unique character. And a character that is very well-loved and cherished by the local community. And there've been plenty of opinions by, from the other side of the chamber about Bridgeman Downs and about people that live in Bridgeman Downs. However, I can tell you, Mr Chair, that I'm only interested in the opinion of the people who live in Bridgeman Downs when it comes to the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan.
Point of order Chair. Point of order councillor Strang and others. Will the councillor take a question? councillor Davis will you take?
No, thank you.
No?
So the planning team since October 2019 has engaged really strongly with the local community. Firstly, setting up a community reference group to get people from various backgrounds, various age demographics to contribute to the process and provide the planning team a reference in a smaller grouping to be able to get direction and some feeling about what the broader community feels about their local area. One thing that has disturbed me as part of this debate, the leader of the opposition seems to think that the whole of Bridgeman Downs is on two blocks on Beckett Road. Well, it's larger than that, Mr Chair. And council's legal team are absolutely doing what they can to defend a council decision about those two blocks in the Planning and Environment Court. What I can tell you is that it appears to me that those opposite really haven't had a very good look at the plan that we are discussing today. There are blocks right across the suburb that now have environmental management plans on them, much greater than it was prior to the undertaking of this neighbourhood plan. And what I can also say, when I first became the councillor for the McDowell Ward, it became known to me very, very early on in the piece that people that were living in Bridgeman Downs were concerned about ad hoc development and townhouses, townhouses coming up across the suburb without consideration of the things that you mentioned through you Chair councillor Allen about having the right infrastructure in place in order to support that type of development. This plan absolutely reflects what the local community want for their suburb. They were heavily engaged in the numerous sessions that we had to receive feedback. And I believe that this plan is a true indication of what the local people in Bridgeman Downs see as the blueprint for their suburb moving into the future. Now, no one is going to be 100% happy with the plan. People have different ideas. But I think that the team have come up with a really great option for us to consider today that really builds on the concerns and the supports of the local community so that we do increase the number of housing in the future by 3,000 to 4,000. We will be doing some heavy lifting in Bridgeman Downs in the future to accommodate for future urban growth. But it also speaks to the environmental sensitivity of the area. We have a creek system running through, or two creek systems running through Bridgeman Downs. There's been a lot of work done by the team, both the planning team and in concert with news to ensure that those corridors have been protected and including vegetated areas that are sensitive and require protection as well. It will give me very great pleasure to go back to my community and advise them that the opposition or the Labor opposition will not be supporting this plan, that they support more townhouses, less environmental areas and that wildlife will not be protected in the manner that they wish. I believe that this is a great plan for the future for Bridgeman Downs. I believe that the local community overwhelmingly would support what is being presented to us today and I support this item.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor, councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion before us for an afternoon tea break, moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you councillors. Further speakers councillor Strung.
Thank you. Thank you Chair. I rise to speak on clause, I think it's C, the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. Well, the first thing I'd like to make is that honestly, the Lord Mayor and the head of, and also the Chair of Planning, really, they're emperors with no clothes. It's really appalling, not so much what's happening out at Bridgeman Downs, but what's happening across Brisbane. But I'll speak to Bridgeman Downs specifically. And that is that I sat in on the presentation that came to, came to the planning committee and I listened very intently of what was proposed out there, at least the draft, the initial draft anyways. And I was very gobsmacked at the fact that Bridgeman Downs was getting a neighbourhood plan that really reflected what the people that are living currently in Bridgeman Downs wants, and that is the status quo. They didn't want any change to the way their suburb, the living, the type of living that they are currently enjoying in Bridgeman Downs. And I congratulated for that, of course.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order definitely.
Councillor Strung, take a question.
Not at this stage now. I'm on a bit of a roll, on a bit of a roll, Mr Chair. But Mr Chair, so again, I listened very intently and I started asking a few questions at the end of the presentation. And there were all the different zones, the zoning for the area. And I asked specific question because out my way, especially in the Duandala area, we do have high-density development and that was emerging community land. Anyways, so, but I was told very abruptly, or very, very, I was told very abruptly that no, there is no high-density development that will be happening in the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. I said, oh, I thought to myself, well, that was really good for them. I wish Duandala and Ellinbrook and a few of the other places across Brisbane could attract that type of zoning and that type of support for the existing communities that enjoy that lifestyle that they bought into all those years ago. So it's really, you know, we keep talking about, every time we come into this place and we come to either a neighbourhood plan or any other planning issue, they talk about increasing the amount of domiciles right across Brisbane. But I don't know why Bridgeman Downs was singled out.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you deputy.
Well councillor Strung, take a question. I need to know if he knows how many domiciles are being introduced.
We'll just get to the question about whether or not you'll take a question councillor Strung.
No.
Thank you councillor Strung, you have the floor.
So, so I looked at, you know, I looked, I listened to it and asked a few questions and found out a few truths. And I went back and looked at a neighbourhood plan at Duandala and I'm thinking, why is there a difference between the two? Why didn't the Duandala neighbourhood plan achieve no change in regards to the way their lifestyles were being lived? And why is Bridgeman Downs being afforded this sort of protection? I congratulate the councillor out there, Tracy Davis, for advocating very much for her community for no change, basically. They don't want to change their lifestyle. I don't blame them. I don't blame them. But there's people right across Brisbane that have had to be impacted on change that they didn't know was going to happen.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you.
Well councillor Strung, please take a question. Maybe he has it on his phone now.
Deputy Mayor, I think you have the opportunity to speak in this debate. Councillor Strung.
No, I won't take a question for the third time. So anyways, I, as I say, I just want to congratulate the councillor out at McDowell. She's done a terrific job advocating for her community and I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll support her. But I wish, I wish to goodness that those other wards, and I don't know about all the wards, but certainly the wards on the south side, that are being impacted by high-density development that Bridgeman Downs is not going to get and that we're getting in spades. It's just an amazing difference between the two neighbourhood plans.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Totally different question.
Point of order deputy mayor.
Will you take a question councillor Strung? It's a totally different question.
No, no, no.
I just want to know where the high density is in Duandala.
We have to conclude whether or not councillor Strung wants to take a question.
Okay. As I said to councillor Murphy the other week, only if I have the answer to your question, I will take a question.
Second of the tribe.
Yes, I'll take a question. Go ahead.
Councillor Strung just said it's a pity they're not getting the high density like Duandala has. Where is the high density in Duandala?
Well, right around Krausacre Street and down Brookside.
Five stories, eight stories?
Yes councillor, please. Deputy Mayor. You've asked a question, allow the answer be heard.
Okay. Multi-story dwellings, how's that Deputy Mayor? That's basically, but listen, I think to conclude, I think the people of Bridgeman Downs have been sold the pup in some respects because I can't see the P&amp;E Court not upholding a developer who wants to develop multi-story dwellings, townhouses, in emerging community lands because it's being, that emerging community land's being built or multi-story dwellings are being built right across the city. And I would think that it'll only take a few, that a few developers to take to the court and I think they'll probably win. And then, as I say, I think they've been sold the pup here. And, but again, I congratulate the councillor for standing up for her community and getting this neighbourhood plan. I just don't think in the end the neighbourhood plan's going to stand up. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Further speakers councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on item, what's, clause D. And that's in relation to the character, protection for a number of homes there, character to heritage protection. And then the removal of a number of homes from character protection to, and make them go to heritage protection. I just want to, as part of the debate, just check, I heard councillor Allen name how many new homes are going to be built in Bridgeman Downs and also Sandgate and how many new residents were going to be there. I've sent an email to the Lord Mayor, or a memo to the Lord Mayor, never had a response on that in relation to the Salisbury-Maruca Nathan Plan. So councillor Allen, are you not in the chamber? If you get that message, can you send that information through please? Because residents and I are asking for it. I just want to say from the outset, and councillor Cassidy said this already, that we're going to be supporting these local heritage changes. There is a lot of unique character in this area and it's really good that these 181 homes in Maruca in the war service munition area are being protected. So I think everyone's in agreement with that and that's a good outcome. There are also additional homes going through this that are getting protected in Salisbury. And I think that is a very good outcome. I'm interested that councillor Marks hasn't stood up and talked about the Dutch houses that are going to be protected in Cooper's Plains, which was in my area. Those homes will now be protected. I'm not sure how council will manage the protection of those homes when we have low, medium and medium density overlays on those sites as well. But it will be interesting to see what happens in that particular situation. That's why, well that's why I would have been interested to hear what councillor Mark's position was in relation to that. But for me, it's what's missing here. So what's missing is homes in Salisbury, homes in Maruca, particularly between Bo Desert and Ipswich Road. There's some industrial buildings that are missing. So I think we've got 200 homes here that are missing from going on this register that are currently in the Maruca-Nathan-Salsbury Plan. And I would have thought that they should have been afforded not just character protection, but heritage protection. And it's disappointing that it, with this administration, this LNP council, that have gone out to consultation and they want to upzone these 200 homes. And when you upzone something, you remove its protection. So they'll lose protection. Certainly, I have great concerns about that and I know that the community does as well. And we didn't just get 70, I think there were 70 replies in relation to, in relation to the Bridgeman Downs submission. We got 260 written replies from residents stating their objections to what council is proposing. So given that one resident in that submission obviously was able to have massive change in relation to the density for Bridgeman Downs, I'm hoping 260 residents will have a whole lot of whack power in relation to this council, but it'll be interesting to see. Can I, I just stand, it's interesting, Lord Mayor used a word that I've used before in this chamber and I'll continue to use it. that I've used before in this chamber, and I'll continue to use it, murky. Murky is the process I regard the neighbourhood planning process as. And I just note that when I read through this document for Bridgeman Downs, that there was no input from the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Board. So the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Board that's being paid $200,000 a year didn't have any input into this plan. But they're certainly having a lot of impact into the Maruca-Nathan and Salisbury neighbourhood plan. I wonder why? I wonder why? I wonder who's on that board? I wonder what their political connections are? I wonder what.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Council Griffiths, take a question?
No, I won't take a question.
You want to take a question?
Deputy Mayor can go up and speak herself. I'm very concerned about that. And I suppose I'm noting here that it's not in the Bridgeman Downs Plan, but it is in the Maruca-Salisbury-Nathan Plan. So I think what the real story is here, yes, tick. There's a lot of houses being protected and their character is going up. And that's good. But behind the smoke, behind all the razzmatazz, there's a lot of properties that aren't being protected. And that's what remains a significant concern for me, significant concern for the public at Maruca-Salisbury-Nathan. And I will be sending the Lord Mayor and the planning chair an invite to attend a public meeting with all the other elected officials for the area to discuss their proposals for the area in the coming weeks. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further debate? Any further debate? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. And it just amazes me that they stand up here and whinge completely and continually about neighbourhood planning, but clearly don't listen and clearly don't know how neighbourhood planning works, clearly don't know definitions. And murky is the word because that's what they do over there continually. They stir up the dirt and hope they have enough smear because they have no idea at all on how this promotion, how this process works. All smear, no idea. I'll say it again, the ALP are all smear and no idea in this place. Councillor Strunk gets up, refuses to answer my question after continually saying that I listened carefully and there's nothing happening in Bridgeman Downs. And wouldn't that be nice? Well, if he listened carefully, he would have clearly heard councillor Adam Allen say there will be nearly 4,000 new domiciles in the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. And that would be easy and very interesting to compare that to some other neighbourhood plans that have been completed. Because once the drafts are completed and once the consultation is completed, then you might have an idea of how many houses are being suggested for a neighbourhood plan. Again, the smear by councillor Griffiths, and I can't find out, I can't find out for Maruca-Nathan-Salisbury. That's because the draft plan has not been finalised. The smear again, with no idea. Councillor Strunk, as I said, has clearly not paid attention to the plan because what he said about the status quo staying is absolutely not correct. We have land east of Bridgeman Road currently zoned as rural, being opened for low density residential zone development. We have land in Rogan Road South Precinct being changed from rural to emerging community. We are providing more housing. We are managing development in a sensible and well-planned manner, as neighbourhood plans do, which is why they have been award-winning and why all the community gets to have their say. And why the experienced and expert town planners in this place make the decision based on the community consultation and those that send in submissions, but beyond just the submissions in what should be a well-planned place in Brisbane, in areas that are far more further out than they are through the Mount of our Corridor neighbourhood plans, where I had a neighbourhood plan that took it up to 20 stories on sites, or the Cooperoo District's neighbourhood plan that upmined to six stories, unlike Sandgate. So this whole LMP-ALP thing is just all smear and no idea. Each neighbourhood plan is a bespoke plan which manages the need for more housing with preserving the suburb's character, whatever that suburb may be. So I'm not sure if councillor Griffiths is saying up here wants to preserve the character of the Magic Mile and make it look like rundown, ruined industrial car yards for the rest of days. But that's what I hear when he doesn't want to see housing in his area. And as for high density in Duen Della, two stories does not high density make councillor Strunk, learn your definitions. High density is 15 stories. If it's not high density, don't call it high density. Get your definitions right.
Thank you. Any, no further speakers? Councillors, we now move to the vote on the items in E and C. They're seriatum as proposed. So the first block is A, B and E together. We're voting for A, B and E in the E and C report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We now move to the vote on item C. Item C, all in favour of item C, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division second.
Division called by the deputy mayor and councillor Landers. Ayes to my right, noes to the left. She's all here. Yep. Thank you, Billy, close the bar. Plaques, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 18 in favour and 6 against.
That's for item C. Declare that carried. Councillors, we now move to the vote on item D. Item D, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by the deputy mayor and councillor Hutton. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Plaques, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 23 in favour, 0 against and 1 abstention.
Thank you. Declare that item carried. Councillors, back to your chairs, please. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee held on Tuesday, the 30th of August, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 30 August, 2022, be adopted. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. And first of all, to our Brisbane Business Hub update from the 7th of September to the 13th of September. It is actually a quiet week on the events front for the next week. There's no events, the next workshop starts on the 14th. But we have received some fantastic feedback for some of our recent workshops that we have had. Anna Hebrin came in and shared her expertise on how to motivate and manage high performing teams in 2022 and got the feedback that she was an absolutely fantastic facilitator. And we had a great speaker and informative chat from GovReady, which we have had as well, a small business roundtable, councillor Hutton, helping businesses get ready to get on panels for state council, for council, state or federal government. So that is a fantastic presentation from GovReady. More artist talks, please, was one of the feedback. Viewing the world through someone else's eyes is so valuable in a concrete jungle. And Beth Mitchell is an artist for our times. And that was on the couch with Beth Mitchell, which I told you about last week, who's one of our Portrait Pliers winners. Somebody else also said they found the session with Beth to be very engaging and interesting. She shared openly about her process and thoughts about being a creative practitioner in today's world. So that's just some of the feedback we're getting back. And again, I encourage councillors in this chamber, again, if you want to drop in, it's open from 9 till 4, Monday to Friday for drop-ins. A little bit later, if you're just working at the desk there, let your businesses know right across your ward when the events are on, making sure they're aware of that. And the same for the suburban hub up at Nunda, where there's plenty of workshops and opportunities happening there as well. Our committee report last week was on city safe malls management and basically a 2022-23 overview of how it's going in the malls. It was very interesting. I think some of the councillors found it very interesting too, learning about our CCTV security network that we run through the CBT in the Fortitude Valley malls. And it really is about making sure that people have the perception of feeling safe within our busier areas and making sure that we can support the QPS in particular with our 141 locations throughout the CBD and the Fortitude Valley as well. We've got a variety of new and current technologies that are being used to their full advantage, the three rapid deployment mobile cameras, the HALO cameras, which is the high activity location observation. They're the ones that can spin around in 360 degrees if needed as well. And they also, we have the loudspeakers installed at 95% of our camera locations as well. Our CCTV TV security officers that work, we saw a photo of the room, even though we couldn't go down there. It's very close to the police beat. So they do work very, very closely with the QPS as well. Some of our upcoming projects that we will be supporting the team through is increasing our hard drive storage capacity, expanding fibre networks, looking at some new rapid deployment cameras because they are being so successful, and a few more additional HALO cameras as well. I'll leave the report to the chambers. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Rangon-Arden.
Thanks, Chair. I might just place on the record once again my concerns about the way some of this surveillance technology is being used, in particular the way the loudspeakers are being used. I've raised this concern in the past and the council administration's been very unapologetic about it. But I think it's pretty deplorable that we play loud music late at night to deter homeless people from using public spaces. I don't think that's good for our city. I think it's quite embarrassing to the council administration, to the people of Brisbane, that they continue to do that. Rough sleepers are not a security threat. They are not evil people. They're just homeless people who had had a bad run of things. And the fact that the council actively persecutes them in public spaces by playing loud music really late at night, I think is really morally bankrupt, to be blunt. And I think the LNP councillors in this chamber really ought to reflect deeply on that and what kind of city it is that you're actually involved in running here. Because the, those are public spaces. They're spaces that are supposed to be for the people. Particularly that covered space up in King George Square. That's one of the few public spaces that's out of the rain, that's out of inclement weather, where rough sleepers can find shelter. And the council plays loud music from midnight onwards. I don't understand how the LNP councillors can feel ethically comfortable with that. I mean, King George Square is not even like there's, there's no businesses operating from midnight till 5am anyway. Same with the mall, all the businesses are closed. It's not like homeless people are somehow a threat to others. They just want somewhere safe to lay down. And so the fact that the council plays loud music with the explicit intent of deterring homeless people, I think is really concerning. I also just want to place on the record again and highlight that the security cameras are used for political purposes. They're being used to target activists, not just for safety reasons. The security cameras aren't just used to deter people from committing assaults or violent crimes. The security cameras are also used to enforce other aspects of the public land and council assets, local law, where people's safety is not at risk. I myself obviously was fined by the council and dragged through the courts. And it did give me some satisfaction to watch the face of the council solicitor when the judge rejected his calls for fines and court costs. But the fact remains that those CCTV cameras were introduced with a very specific purpose, which was ostensibly to protect people's safety. And instead, they're being used as evidence in court cases to pursue activists, not just myself, but quite a number of activists, for really minor things like holding signage or speaking on a PA system. Speaking on a PA system isn't ordinarily something that I would describe as a safety hazard. Certainly, it might be annoying, depending what's being said over the PA. But that's hardly a safety risk. So these CCTV cameras are not just being used for safety and security. They're being used to control and suppress peaceful protest. And I mean, we all know that, but I think it's good to make it visible and to articulate it clearly and make sure that's on the public record. Because we're always told that security cameras are being installed for our safety. Actually, they're being installed to control people and to carefully manage how public spaces are being used to discourage any usages which might conflict with the political motives and aspirations of whoever happens to run the administration at the time. So I do think there's a serious concern about mission creep with the way some of this technology has been rolled out, including the HALO cameras. I'm aware of a number of cases where they've been used as evidence to persecute activists who've, in my view, the things they've done shouldn't even be illegal to begin with. But there's, I think, a real concern there about the council administration misusing its power, about overreach of state surveillance and state control for a political party that's supposedly in favour of liberty and has concerns about big government overreach. This LNP council administration is very much running along the lines of excessive government and control and interference in people's lives and really hardcore regulation and policing of public spaces. I think it's probably one of the most, I don't know with confidence. I'm emphasizing this with the caveat that I think. But I think out of all the councils in Australia, Brisbane City Council is probably one of the most authoritarian and one of the most controlling when it comes to how public spaces are surveilled and policed. I probably should also single out the Morton Bay Regional Council because those were the ones who, after, you'll be interested in this one, councillor Strunk, Morton Bay Regional Council, a couple of years ago, they tried to introduce audio recording, so not just video recording. Yeah, yeah. Our council cameras have that technology as well, as I understand it. And I'm very concerned that at some point the LNP is going to try and sneak that in and introduce audio recording without telling the people of Brisbane. So I like some confidence and clarity from that, from the deputy mayor, if she cares to respond that, whether she will clearly rule out the LNP administration using audio recording in public spaces. Because I think it's a violation of our civil liberties and it goes far beyond what's necessary and appropriate in a free and democratic society.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Deputy Mayor, something up?
Yes. First of all, I would just like to clarify the misrepresentation. I didn't say that the cameras and everything were there purely for safety. I said they were there to make sure that our community felt safe because they knew the cameras were there. And I think councillor Sri Ranganathan very clearly explained the difference between the Green Labour Alliance, possibly more of the green on this, and the LNP, who do believe in a free democratic society, but also believe that when there are laws and things are illegal, they are illegal. They are not, yeah, maybe don't feel like it, illegal. They are illegal or they are not. And we use the cameras for when people do illegal activities. Full stop. Whether he likes that or not, if it's illegal, the cameras may be used.
Thank you. Councillors, we now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee Report, please.
Thanks, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 30th of August, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 30 August, 2022, be adopted. Councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Chair. Look, last week, the Transport Committee presentation was on DDA compliance across our city's transport infrastructure, in line with the disability standards for accessible public transport. Council has been progressively upgrading the city's bus stops, our ferry terminals and other transport infrastructure to ensure that that is accessible for residents of all ages and abilities. Of course, we're also working to improve the accessibility of our transport through the Metro project. And we've implemented many changes to our vehicle as a result of our engagement with the accessibility sector. It was an interesting presentation, Chair. And there were. It was an interesting presentation Chair, and there were many questions from the committee. Mr Chair, I also want to provide an update on the status of our ferry services and terminals following the severe weather last week and the flood event in February this year. We've been working very hard to repair our vessels and terminals to restore our much-loved ferry network. Over half of our terminals have already been repaired and reopened, all within three months of the flood. Our CityCat fleet is also back up and running with flood repairs now complete on our vessels. That means that we are able to return as many services as possible, including the be limiter Tenerife Cross River Ferry and end-to-end CityCat services and some express services as well. The remaining eight terminals are all flood recovery programme terminals, and the structure of these terminals proved extremely resilient in the 2022 event. They are located in higher risk locations along the river, so this means there is a higher risk of damage to their structures in a flood event due to the speed and path that debris travels in, as well as the depth and flow of the river at those locations. The repairs have been awarded now across two packages separated out by the types of work needed for each terminal. The first package covers six of the remaining terminals, so Sydney Street, Holborn Street, Maritime Museum, QUT, Milton and UQ. Work on these terminals started last month and we are hoping to have them up online in the next couple of months, which will bring almost the entire network back online, which will be a great outcome for residents and for visitors to our city, because we all know the number one attraction on TripAdvisor when you come to Brisbane is actually a CityCat, would you believe? The second package that's been awarded, has been awarded for North Key and Regatta, but the level of damage on these terminals was much more severe, so that will take a little bit longer to repair and return to service. And as we have identified and the media has very correctly picked up on, that will probably come back online in January, February this, next year, I should say. Chair. At the same time, we're continuing to progress work on our programme of new and upgraded ferry terminals, so to ensure that we maintain a modern and accessible ferry network that continues to grow. Late last year, we opened the new Howard Smith Wharves Terminal and upgraded Southbank Terminal. And as the chamber knows, Dockside and Mowbray are the next two terminals in our upgrade programme. We have been working through the tender process for these terminals and we're expected to commence construction on Dockside later this year. As part of this process, council's been engaging with the Dockside Body Corporate to finalise our service easement, which is essential before we start construction works. Unfortunately, a recent vote by the Body Corporate of Dockside means that council has not been granted the service easement and the commencement of the Dockside Terminal works will now need to be delayed. As a result, we will now proceed with upgrade works at Mowbray Park, ferry terminal first, while we continue negotiations at Dockside Ferry Terminal and potentially commence a process of issuing a notice of intention to resume that service easement pending those negotiations. I understand that this is not the outcome that many in the community had hoped for, but I can assure residents that council remains utterly committed to completing both of these terminals as quickly as possible. In the meantime, we are continuing to work through the service easement issues and to ensure that we deliver Dockside Terminal as soon as possible. Chair, also as part of our rebuild and recover programme following the February flood, we had to alter our plans to restore three of our monoholes and instead made the difficult decision to restore only one of the wooden ferries. We know that these vessels are iconic to Brisbane, so we've made the remaining monoholes available to the community to acquire via a blind auction process. Our hope is that this will provide people who are passionate about these vessels the chance to own their own unique piece of Brisbane's maritime history. Expressions of interest on the vessels closed on Friday, the 26th of August. I'm pleased to say there was a very good level of interest in the vessels. As a result, all eight vessels have been successfully sold. The successful bidders were notified yesterday and they will now have some time to make their payments and claim the vessels. Seven of the eight tenders have advised that they are locally based and one of them is from the Gold Coast region, which we won't hold against them, Chair. This is a great outcome for the people of Brisbane because it means that the vessels will be kept locally, restored locally, and it ensures the best possible use of rate payers' money. I know councillor Cassidy was concerned that these vessels were, quote, "being flogged to the lowest bidder", unquote, but I can assure councillor Cassidy that the vessels have in fact gone to the highest bidder as per the process of an auction and how it works in the Oxford English Dictionary. Now, we will be able to look at how we reinvest the proceeds of this auction to ensure that the people of the city of Brisbane get the best value for money. Mr Chair, I'd like to also now just finish by briefly thanking our staff at River City Ferries, and I say that in air quotes, Chair, because CityCat operators have never been our staff necessarily, it has always been contracted out to a third party. But the way in which many staff who serve Brisbane City Council on the river through the contracted out operations of CityCats and KittyCats see themselves very much as part of the instrument of transport for Brisbane and serving a public good in this city. Just like our bus drivers, our ferry masters go above and beyond to serve the people of Brisbane, and there was no better example of that than the work that they put in during the flood event. But last week, they showed us yet again their commitment to the people of Brisbane. As part of National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, Captain Feather Sword took over one of our CityCats to honour this cause and provide a special day for some families who are battling childhood cancer. To make the event extra special, River City Ferry staff onboard the vessel decorated the CityCat interior and dressed themselves up in pirate gear. We know, Chair, that Talk Like a Pirate Day is on September 19th and it raises much-needed funds for the charity, helping them to provide free accommodation, psychological and emotional support and transportation services to receive life-saving treatments for regional families. And so I'd like to encourage everyone to support that valuable cause. But I would just like to thank River City Ferries for the great work that they do supporting charitable causes through CityCat charters in our city, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Strang in Arden.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, just with the disability accessibility upgrades in terms of public transport infrastructure, that was an interesting presentation. I was glad that the Chair was able to share that info with us. I did ask a few questions following on from that presentation about the future of council's buses in terms of audio announcements, and councillor Murphy very kindly confirmed that this week that the new buses that are being added to the fleet will have those audio announcements. It would be cool if councillor Murphy could just clarify what will happen with the older buses. Is there a plan to retrofit the older buses? Or is it the case that we're going to be bringing new buses that have the audio announcements, but none of the older buses will? And if so, when's that change going to happen or who's going to fund that change? So I'd appreciate a quick response from councillor Murphy on that one. Also, I'll, actually, I'll talk to you offline councillor Murphy about the Dockside Terminal, just a couple of insights to offer there as well. Cheers.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Murphy, something up?
Yeah, thanks very much Chair, and thanks to councillor Sri for his contribution on this debate. Look, my intent and Lord Mayor's intent with this councillor Sri is that we will both ensure that future procurement of the buses ensures that there are many features for those with access and inclusion issues who require stop announcements and audio loops. That will be fitted to the new fleet, but we are also looking through the contract that we have with Indra for the metro network systems to see if we can backport that into our existing fleet. Now, we have 11 different types of bus in the Transport for Brisbane fleet of varying different ages and technological capabilities, so it's likely that some of them we won't be able to retrofit that technology to, but it's likely that there will be others that we will be able to do that in. So we will of course let you know how we go with those investigations. Of course, the contract with Indra has just been let and, you know, we're only about a month into that at this stage, so we'll be able to provide an update to the chamber at a later date on our progress there. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. We move to the vote on the Transport Committee report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 30th of August 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Maddick that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Mr Chair, just the report speaks to the regular major projects that are, it's a regular report that speaks to major projects that occur in the inner city principally, but sometimes in a broader scope. It's a regular report. I hope that the information was of interest to the councillors in the committee and, as I say, a regular quarterly update and that the information is of interest.
Are there any further speakers? No further speakers. We move to the vote on the Infrastructure Committee report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 30th of August 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In last week's committee meeting, we were provided with an update on the platform project at the Mount Cootha Botanical Gardens. The platform initiative began as a Gold Coast 2018 Commonwealth Games legacy to showcase contemporary site-responsive sculptures which have been commissioned by council. The sculptures are positioned on the platform, so it's a concrete platform with devices to affix the sculptures. It's in a prominent position in the Botanical Gardens. And so the sculptures are positioned on the platform for a period of time before they are relocated to a permanent site within the Brisbane Botanic Gardens at Mount Cootha. Over recent years, this programme has commissioned five sculptures which have contributed to council's contemporary public art programme. The sculptures include Reminders 20 and 21 by Jamie North, Large Arks by Anna Varandorf, Gone to Seed by Stuart Green and Roots by Hiromi Tango. Roots was the result of a collaborative process by volunteers and the Brisbane Botanical Arts, Botanical Gardens staff. A five-minute video was produced to capture the journey of creating the sculpture and is published on council's website. In 2021, a national expressions of interest project was undertaken for the platform's fifth commission, which was open to First Nations artists, and this resulted in six submissions received from local and acclaimed artists. Artist Tony Albert was the recipient who created Native Still Life using bronze and two-pack epoxy coating. The sculpture is inspired by native flowers and how they are associated with Aboriginal people. The artist's work will also be showcased at Howard Smith Wharves as part of the Backyard Art Stories exhibition, which will launch this month. All the artworks mentioned are in the committee papers and are also available via the council's website. Mr Chair, I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday 30 August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Our presentation last week was on wildlife movement solutions. Wildlife movement solutions are one of the ways we can assist native animals to move across habitat areas because we know that native animals need to move for food, for shelter, for breeding and migration, and sometimes to escape danger. Council targets wildlife movement solutions toward wildlife that are threatened, that are highly mobile, have large habitat areas and are particularly vulnerable to vehicle strikes. Our wildlife movement solutions include built fauna infrastructure that allows movement between habitat areas such as land bridges, underpasses, fencing and glider poles. We use wildlife fencing around this infrastructure to help funnel animals towards safer, more suitable crossing points. Council is also focused on complementary habitat enhancements such as fodder restoration and climbing poles to reduce the need for movement in between habitat areas in search of things like food and shelter. And of course, council is working to increase driver awareness through digital signage and pavement thresholds. Mr Chair, Brisbane is Australia's most biodiverse capital city and council is absolutely committed to ensuring it remains a safe place for our diversity of native species, including koalas, kangaroos, wallabies, flying foxes, echidna, and of course, many more. Because our native animal populations are diverse and complex and we are delivering innovative movement solutions across Brisbane suburbs, creeks and bushland. Item B was a park naming submission to rename the driveway within Marchant Park Aspie as Betty Webb Drive. The late Miss Betty Webb, survived by her daughter Gay, was an Aspie local who built an enviable reputation as one of Queensland's most outstanding female cricket players on her local court at Marchant Park. Betty Webb was a woman with a huge natural sporting talent, crafting a well-earned reputation as a batswoman and wicketkeeper during her heyday in 1932 to 1939. She also tried her hand at tennis and earned a similarly impressive reputation. To this day, Marchant Park remains a cricket destination on Brisbane's north side, being home to 10 cricket fields, as well as the Warehouse Cricket Association of Queensland. The renaming will be complemented by the erection of a wayfinding sign on the left-hand side of the park driveway. This, I think, is a very fitting tribute for a woman who dedicated much of her life to her sport and to Marchant Park. Betty's family, the association and the local councillor are fully supportive of the recommendation. Mr Chair, I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on perhaps both items of this report before us today. Firstly, item A, wildlife movement solutions. It's fascinating, isn't it, again, that what the LNP tell us they do and what they do in practice are two different things. For the past almost six weeks, I've been trying to have some wildlife crossing signs installed in significant areas in my ward, including the Sherwood Arboretum, which forms part of the Botanic Gardens collection, is in an area of high ecological significant mapped within city plan and is within the Brisbane River Corridor. Now, my request for some wildlife crossing signs was refused within a matter of days. And I got a very standard reply back. The second location is literally on the edge of the Brisbane River Corridor, on the corner of Queenscroft Street and Nahagraves Avenue in Chelma. So literally on the non-riverside of the street. There's Park, Queenscroft Street Park nearby, and we have a lot of wildlife that moves through, again, the Brisbane River Corridor. Surprisingly, there's a little bit of wildlife in parks in my ward because of the river. It provides habitat, the parks provide habitat and food, and we do have, you know, some wildlife. Occasionally, we even have a koala and I have photos of that too. But again, this Brisbane City Council said, duh-duh, no, you can't have a wildlife crossing sign. So it's with some surprise, I've been observing some of the wildlife crossing signs that have gone up around Brisbane, and I'm fascinated, fascinated by council's refusal to put them up. So anyway, I've now taken matters into my own hands. I've learned from the example of the Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor, and I don't believe for a second a single thing this council says about wildlife management solutions. Unless it relates to an LNP ward, they are not interested in protecting wildlife in this city. Here's some more examples for councillor Davis, who's shouting across the chamber. I mean, councillor Wine can't hear her, but I can hear her on the far side of the chamber, and the Chair sitting between me and her can't hear her either. So councillor Griffiths and I moved a motion to have a wildlife bridge put in between parkland at the back of Kenossa Hospital, near where the Oxford Secondary College is, and the Fort Road Bush Care, Fort Road Bush Care area, which, you guessed it, is part of the Brisbane River Corridor area, it's right on the river. And just over the hill is Rocks Riverside Park, which is in an LNP ward, so it's got everything that opens and shuts and is gold-plated. This council didn't support that. This council didn't support protecting the land just on the other side of 17 Mile Rocks. It allowed houses to be built on that despite all the wildlife there. I asked for a rope bridge across Fairfield Road to protect the significant opossum population that lives in Fairfield, but no, council wouldn't do that. In fact, pretty much everything that I've asked for, this council has said no to. But I am aware of the significant investment that's being made, again, in the deputy mayor's area. I know that councillor Marks and her predecessor got the first bridge over the road out in Runcornwater, out your way, which is, you know, over main, it's been there a long time. Councillor MacPherson, yeah, your predecessor. Yeah, so that's fine. But in my area...
Councillors, please.
In my ward, we can't even get a wildlife crossing sign.
Councillor Davis, please.
It's not rubbish. It's not rubbish. Five minutes after I emailed councillor Davis yesterday to say, "Don't worry about it anymore after six weeks", she got it, I know. Two minutes later, it's on the phone. Two minutes! I don't know anything about this, councillor. Councillor Davis has asked me to look into it. And I'm like, "We've emailed you twice now, and you don't know anything about it. Oh, can you just send it to me again, councillor?" After I said I'm going to do exactly what the deputy mayor and the lord mayor do. So guess what? This council refuses to protect wildlife in my area. That includes huge tracts of the Brisbane River Corridor. That includes areas of high ecological significance. Council even builds on areas of high... Oh, sorry. Council allows building on areas of high ecological significance in my ward that are supposed to be protected. And it is just not good enough. So far from this council saying it protects wildlife, I think that the proper rider should be added. It will protect wildlife where it is politically convenient in LNP wards.
Was that it? Any further speakers? Councillor Davis, summing up.
Thank you very much, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Johnston for her contribution of Carry On, which is all it is. You know, the biggest mistake I clearly did was answering the email and getting her the signage.
Councillor Johnston! Councillor Johnston! And now councillor Johnston, stop! Stop!
Councillor Johnston.
Councillor Johnston, stop!
It doesn't suit councillor Johnston to get what she asks for, and I'm sure there are other opportunities that councillors who have requested that council officers look at wildlife signage in their local areas where it's not appropriate to put it. Council officers are very keen to ensure that our wildlife population is looked after. But of course, we have to put it in areas where it gets... Has a benefit for wildlife. And I would say this, Mr Chair.
Councillor Johnston, please stop interrupting.
I would put the recommendation of the location of appropriate wildlife infrastructure well at the feet of council officers who know what they're doing and experienced and trained in this thing, than councillor Johnston just coming here, having a spray and trying to make a political point. The reality is councillor Johnston is getting her signage. It's currently being designed by TPO and it will be installed in... Councillor Johnston, if you don't want to sign, I can cancel it now. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday 30th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chair.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Look, the committee presentation last week was on the Animal Rehoming Centres. The Animal Rehoming Centres provide an essential place of refuge, safety and care for seized, lost or surrendered animals in Brisbane. And since 2014, the Animal Welfare League of Queensland has managed and run both centres at Brackenridge and Willawong. The WARA Animal Rehoming Centre is primary for adoption and returning of lost animals to their families. And council is committed to ensuring the centres continue to meet the growing needs of the community and are probably properly maintained. We actually have had an excursion out to the Willawong Animal Rehoming Centre with the committee, and we saw the new cat penthouses that they call for the cats to... That are now in there and all the improvements that have been done. We have not... Sorry? Cat pet house. We have not managed... Councillor Murphy's now got cat envy for his own little Keith. He probably needs his own penthouse. So the... That'll probably be in the hands of the yes. So we haven't managed to get out to the WARA Animal Rehoming Centre since all the work's been done out there, so I'm going to try and endeavour to do that as well. And if the committee is interested in having an excursion out to that place, I'm sure I'm happy to facilitate that if that is the wish of the committee. And the presentation last week was given by Paula. Now, Paula has been the acting manager of CAS since January of this year. I want the chambers to know that Paula will be stepping out of this acting role to go on leave. And I'd just like to mention a couple of things that Paula has taken on in her time as acting manager. So in the past nine months, Paula has continued the CAS services with a key focus on community value. And Paula did lead and support the CAS brunch during the February 22 flood event and has a focus on reducing regulatory burden to Brisbane's residents and businesses. So I thank you, Paula, for all the work you've done in that space. It's been a delight working with you, and I wish you all the well on your leave, and I look forward to when you return to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. We move to the vote on the City Standards Committee report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday 30th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just before moving to the report, I do want to let people know all of the fantastic things that have been happening... Well, not all, but some of the fantastic things that have been happening around Brisbane. So last Wednesday, we held the Lord Mayor's Photographic Awards ceremony, and it was fantastic to see all of those wonderful photographs with the theme this year being Spirit of Brisbane. And it truly was the spirit of Brisbane where we had so many fantastic entries, and it was so hard to choose the winners, but also so hard for the people's choice. But it was a great opportunity for us to do that. And one of the great things from that is that we'll be using one of the artworks on our library card. So I think that's a great way to recognise some of the work that we have with the Lord Mayor's Photographic Awards. It's also a great opportunity for us to recognise Levon Babongi and the work that she did and to have that beautiful award and to have her fantastic family who attended and gave a wonderful speech. And it's... They're so proud of the work that their daughter did while she was alive. And so her son was there, and he performs regularly at gatherings. So we were delighted that they were able to join us once again and to really celebrate Levon's life with this wonderful award. That evening, I was presented with a Pride Round AFL Football by the wonderful Trish Squires, who is the AFL head of Queensland, and Rebecca Rendazzo, who is the head coach of the Cooperu Kings, Queensland Women's AFL Cooperu team. Again, fantastic women. We were joined by Kobe Moore and a few of the people that really make AFL so fantastic. And of course, I think it was just before that other fantastic win by the Lions the other night. So that was great. I did predict that. They asked me who I thought would win, and I said Brisbane, mostly because I didn't know who else was playing, but that was fine. We also... On the next day, it was the Karuna 30th anniversary. Now, I don't know if everyone in the chamber knows about the fantastic work that the Karuna Hospice Services do, but they are one of the few palliative care people around Brisbane. They get very little funding, but they were celebrating their 30th anniversary, and it was truly, again, a fascinating opportunity for me to be present and to celebrate with them that 30th anniversary. We also had on the same evening the 200th year anniversary of the independence of... And the launch of Brazil Week. Now, in true Brazil fashion, their Brazil Week went for 11 days, not seven days. And the event was attended by so many honours, I couldn't keep up. But we had ambassadors, we had consul generals, we had... Minister Leonard was there, and it was really a fantastic... A fantastic launch to Brazil Week. And I think they're still partying somewhere in and around Brisbane. Friday saw the opening of Brisbane Festival, and we've already talked about that today. And on Saturday, I went to the Brisbane Square Library for the Gold Star and Little Star Awards, which was just fantastic. There were so many young people there, and I really want to give a big thanks to all of our library staff who've been involved with the Gold Star and Little Star Awards. I know that everybody in this chamber loves their library and loves the work that they do. And I know that we've all participated in the cutting of the cake and having a fantastic time. And to see the children really enjoying their reading was fantastic. And then on Sunday, I joined councillor Sri Ranganathan... Did I get that right? Yahoo! At a fantastic Kirilpa Derby and beggars banquet. And it was just, again, the most amazing celebration of a street party. And I hadn't been before, so I really had a great time. And I really want to thank Harmony Downs for the work that she had done to bring it all together. We had some fantastic outfits. I got to sort of present some awards, and I know that there was a lot of fun all round. So I really want to thank the local councillor and all of the people that enjoyed... That had something to do with our Kirilpa Derby. And I finished the afternoon by having a cup of coffee at West Village, which is just amazing and beautiful. And of course, today, in our wonderful city hall, we had a Brisbane Festival Lord Mayor's Concert where we had 64 musical students from the Queensland Conservatorium. And I think, again, how fantastic that we are celebrating all of those wonderful things. Moving to the committee presentation, we had what's on for the school holidays. And can I just say? Lots! There were so many activities that are being planned for the school holidays. And I know that everybody in this chamber will be promoting those activities. There are many free activities, there's activities in libraries, there's activities outside. So I really urge everyone to read the report, to really get involved with what we're doing with the school holidays. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday 30th of August be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Item A was the committee presentation, which was from the chief financial officer to give the committee an update on council's internal processes to recover funds from the Queensland Reconstruction Authority. There is a huge amount of work that's going on behind the scenes to ensure that council is reimbursed for all flood recovery expenses we are eligible for, as well as accessing category D and E funding. Under the arrangements, exceptional circumstance assistance has been announced, and council is eligible to apply for funding available under categories D and E. Under category D, assistance for the 22 flood event includes local recovery and resilience grants of $1 million for projects that support improved community resilience and clean-up grants of non-essential assets. There are also exceptional circumstance packages across Queensland for roads betterment, community and recreational assets, environmental recovery and flood risk management. The QRA has supported council providing additional information to progress the review of Brisbane's claims for funding from category D as part of a statewide funding allocation. Our claims for counter-disaster operations, emergency works and immediate reconstruction works costs are underway, and I want to acknowledge the painstaking work of the Disaster Recovery Claims Team. For the first CDO submission alone, it involved over 817 rows of data, 474 photos, 209 invoices, 96 timesheets, and that's for a claim in the order of $300,000. But that gives you, Mr Deputy Chair, a sense of how detailed the work is that goes in behind the scenes. We use a smaller claim early in the process to seek feedback from QRA to ensure that our more significant claims can be processed smoothly. There are millions in other reimbursement claims in the pipeline as well, which will be submitted soon. Item B, Mr Deputy Chair, was a detailed report submitted on file on council's position relating to accounts receivable, rates, accounts payable, provisions and moles for the period ended June 22. And I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A, the Queensland Reconstruction Authority claims for counter-flood recoveries. Well, it's very interesting, isn't it? That this council claims... There's all this work going into flood recovery. Yet when you make a file request to find out exactly what council's doing, all they give you is one document, which is about a PowerPoint presentation about ferry terminals. So over four weeks ago, I asked to have a look at the flood recovery task force documents, and that's all council has dumped up. Took them three weeks then to say, "Oh, look, we made a mistake, councillor", and then yesterday, I'm told, it's too hard after a month. It's too hard to find any flood recovery documents for me at all. We hear today about all the work that's going on behind the scenes, but apparently it's too hard to download a file, put it on a stick and send it to the information management officer for me to have a look at. That's what this council is doing. Now, the reason I want to look at the documents is because of what happened in 2011. It was very clear in 2011 that council did not fully scope and identify all of the flood-damaged public assets in my ward and possibly in other parts of the city. As a result, council did not rebuild them after it flooded in 2011. And the most significant example of this is the public pontoon that was at Chelma, which people could launch their kayak off or their boat or whatever they wanted to do. Despite this being washed away by the floods, probably out there in the river somewhere still, this council refused, refused to identify, scope and list it to be repaired. Four years after, they have refused to... For years after, they have refused to, despite petitions, actually funded out of capital works. So in a ward that is dominated by the river, we have barely any public pontoons. There's one at Graceville, but the one at Chelma hasn't been replaced. Now, after the 2022 floods, I fear we're in the same position. Of the 134 streets that were flooded in my ward, not a single one has been identified for any kind of flood repairs. Not a single one. To my knowledge, there's not a single footpath that has been identified for repairs. There is not a single urban channel section that has been identified for repairs. Certainly, I'm unaware of any drains that have been identified for repairs. And I've been asking because where I have identified drains that are blocked still, six months on post the floods, council can't even give me a timeframe as to when they will be cleaned out. So the reason I want to look at this material is because I am aware of where it flooded, in Tennyson Ward, and I have some idea of the pain that happened last time in 2011 when the assets were not probably properly scoped and identified to be part of the QRA claim. This council is now trying to hide, deliberately hide, that information from me, and it is appalling.
Point of order, Mr Chair, Deputy Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Man.
I believe deliberately hiding this information is imputing motive. I do not believe that is the case, and I ask her to withdraw.
Thank you, Deputy Man. I support that point of order. Councillor Johnston, if you could, please.
Council has made a deliberate decision to deny me access to this information. It is a deliberate decision. It wasn't, "Oh, it was an accident and we're not giving it to you". They have made a deliberate decision to not give it to me. And it's too hard. It's much too hard. After four weeks, just the one PowerPoint presentation with seven pages, I think, about fixing ferry terminals in your ward, Mr Deputy Chair. That's what council thought I wanted when I made a file request. So... thought I wanted when I made a file request. So I can see here that by December 2022, council has, is required to submit its claims for all its damaged assets. I will be following up on this matter with some significance and persistence over the next few months, because when the main road, an arterial road in your ward that was underwater for five days, has cracks that a motorbike could fall through, and yet this council can't identify it as a flooded road, I mean, we heard councillor Wyan stand up here months ago, oh, we've got this great new machine, it's mapping all the roads in Brisbane, it's going to tell us which roads need resurfacing. I mean, did it not get out to Tennyson Ward? Did it not make it? I mean, I don't know. But I can tell you, the roads out my way that were flooded are damaged, and they need to be repaired. And it is just astonishing to me that months and months after the floods, council can't tell me a single thing about road recovery. It's hard to get drains cleaned up, or to get any timeframe about drains cleaned up. That's let alone all the big-ticket items that need to be fixed. So it is interesting, isn't it, that council's going to milk every cent they can out of the federal government for flood recovery, but at this stage, it appears there's none for Tennyson Ward. So I would just be asking the question of what assets actually have been identified by this council. And there's clearly a reason that council does not want to provide that information to me. And I feel that is of very great concern. And to be honest, it is, in my view, shameful that this council finds it too hard to provide a flooded ward councillor with basic information about what the flood recovery task force is doing. The intent of Paul De Jersey's review was to make sure that councilors were involved in this process. We are a critical link between the community and council. And when we are shut out of discussions, when we are ignored with our concerns, when council won't even let us look at files that we are legislatively entitled to under section 102 of the City of Brisbane Act, it is very, very concerning. It just speaks to the level of secrecy and transparency that this LNP administration is now overseeing in Brisbane City Council, and it is long past time that they went.
Further debate? No further debate. Councillor Cunningham? I'll now put the motion. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item five on the agenda. Councillor Sri Ranganathan, would you please move the motion?
Thanks, Chair. I move that Brisbane City Council resolves to undertake widespread public consultation and investigate introducing a separate higher ratings category for residential investment properties that are left vacant for at least six months, so that investment property owners have a stronger financial incentive to either rent out vacant dwellings or sell them. Higher rates or charges would not apply to owner-occupier homes or tenanted investment properties.
Seconded for the purpose of debate.
It's been moved by councillor Sri Ranganathan, seconded by councillor Johnston, that Brisbane City Council resolves to undertake widespread public consultation and investigate introducing a separate higher ratings category for residential investment properties that are left vacant for at least six months, so that investment property owners have a stronger financial incentive to either rent out vacant dwellings or sell them. Higher rates or charges would not apply to owner-occupier homes or tenanted investment properties. Is there any debate?
Point of order, Chair. Before you start my time, I just had a point of order relevant to potential conflicts of interest, and obviously not casting any aspersions, but I'm aware that some councillors in the chamber do own residential investment properties within the Brisbane local government area. This motion directly proposes a different ratings category for a class of residential investment properties, and I think that does raise a potential conflict of interest. So perhaps you need to seek advice on that, or perhaps the councillors who own residential, perhaps councillors who own residential investment properties need to declare those as conflicts of interest.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Deputy Man?
There's no conflict of interest, just as there's no conflict in usual business when we do a budget debate and rating categories are actually debated during the budget debate. This is general business, usual business, so no conflict arises.
Thank you, Deputy Man. And if any councillors do feel that they are in some way conflicted, they obviously have the ability to stand now and state that conflict and excuse themselves from the chamber. But otherwise, I will proceed with the debate.
Oh, yeah, point of order.
Oh, no, I'm happy to rule. So for the purposes of clarity, councillor Sri Ranganathan, this isn't the ordinary course. This is no different to our debate in regards to the budget, or in regards to town planning matters, and which we debated just before. And again, but if any councillor feels that they are in some way conflicted, then they absolutely have the right to state that and remove themselves. But other than that, I'm happy to proceed with the debate on this motion. Councillor Sri Ranganathan?
Thank you, Chair. I brought this motion to the chamber today because I'm concerned about increase in housing insecurity and rising homelessness in our city, while thousands of residential homes sit empty. And this is a serious problem, not just for Brisbane, but a lot of jurisdictions around Australia, and in fact, the world, where we see that a certain class of property investors have a profit incentive or a financial incentive to leave homes empty, rather than renting them out cheaply. That's not the case with the majority of property investors. The majority of residential property investors, they want to get tenants in so they can get rental revenue from their tenants. But there are certain kinds of property investors, and particularly certain kinds of land speculators, certain property developers, certain multinational investment funds, superannuation funds, et cetera, that sometimes have a desire to simply park money in real estate without actually generating any rental revenue. They simply invest their money in those properties, they buy those properties, and then they leave them sitting empty because they're simply waiting for land values to rise. We have recently been able to access the 2021 census data, and that painted a really interesting picture. So the census was taken in August 2021, and on census night, in the Brisbane City Council local government area, there are approximately 36,500 homes that were unoccupied on census night. Now, obviously, there are a range of reasons that those homes would be unoccupied. That doesn't mean they're all sitting vacant long term. Now, out of those 36,000, we know that about 2,300 are being rented out on Airbnb and may not have been captured in census data, even if they were occupied on census night. We know that a further 1,000 or so would have been potentially available on other short-term rental accommodation platforms. We also know from real estate industry vacancy rates, that the published vacancy rate in August 2021 was 1.3%. So there are about 4,700 dwellings that were being advertised for rent at the time the census was taken. Now, we know some of those would still have been occupied, because the previous tenants wouldn't have moved out. But even if we accept or assume that all of those properties were being, were occupied, sorry, were unoccupied, we're still in the ballpark of around 30,000 homes that were empty on census night. So then the crucial question becomes, what proportion of those homes were empty, simply because residents were away travelling for work, or for leisure, or away from home for healthcare? Now, we also know that during August 2021, when the census was undertaken, the COVID travel restrictions were still in effect, and so it was much harder for people to travel for work and leisure. And so we were in a situation where a lot of people had already been able to return to Brisbane if they were trapped overseas during the first wave of COVID lockdowns. But we had snap lockdowns and ongoing travel restrictions that still applied in August 2021. And so the proportion of people who were travelling for work, or leisure, or healthcare would have been reduced compared to normal. And that's borne out in the census data from 2016, because in the 2016 census data, we can see that actually around 8.4% of Brisbane homes were empty on census night. There were about 36,900 homes were unoccupied on census night in 2016. By the 2021 census, that number had dropped slightly, even though thousands of additional dwellings had been built in Brisbane. The number of unoccupied dwellings on census night had dropped to 36,500, and only 7.3% of dwellings across the Brisbane local government area were unoccupied. So there actually has been a decrease in the number of unoccupied homes between the 2016 census and the 2021 census. And that decrease is best attributed to the tightening vacancy rates, and the lower number of people who would have been travelling for work or leisure. But when we factor in all these different data sets, and we look closely at the methodology in terms of how the Australian Bureau of Statistics collects that information, which is quite nuanced and robust, we end up with an estimate of approximately 20,000 homes in Brisbane that are being left empty long term. There are 20,000 residential investment properties, including apartments and freestanding houses, that are being left empty for at least six months, in some cases, several years. Now, we have to ask ourselves as a council administration, in the middle of a housing crisis, how is it acceptable that 20,000 homes can be left sitting empty while people are sleeping on the street, while people are living out of cars, while people are couch surfing and jumping from one homeless shelter to another? It's simply not acceptable. So then it becomes a question of what do we do about it? The council administration has been quick to talk about supply and how we need to rezone for more development to create more housing. The reality is, though, that if new housing is being built but then being left empty by investors, that doesn't help the housing crisis. And we know that a certain proportion of brand-new apartment stock is also being left empty in what's called lock-up investments, where an investor just buys the apartment as a lock-up, they have no intention of living there, they have no intention of renting out, again, they're just parking money there. So that's a problem even with new developments that are being constructed today. But the reality is that right now, there are at least 20,000 homes in Brisbane that are already built, that could already be housing people. So we don't have to just wait for future housing to be built, whether that's public housing or private housing. We could get a jump on the housing crisis now by making more efficient use of that existing housing stock. And as we've seen in other jurisdictions around the world, one of the mechanisms available to local governments or to state governments is to charge higher rates, or charge higher levies, or charge higher taxes to investment property owners who make a deliberate choice to leave homes empty, rather than renting them out cheaply. This motion today proposes a cutoff of six months, where if a home is left empty for more than six months, property investors would be charged higher rates. Now, I want to be clear that we're not talking about owner-occupier homes here, and it's been disappointing to see some of the misleading rhetoric and misrepresentations about what we're calling for. We're not talking about owner-occupier homes. We're not talking about homes where people are away travelling or away from work. We're talking about investment properties alone. And we've also identified that exemptions could potentially apply in situations where there is a legitimate reason for an investment property being left vacant long term. So a legitimate reason for an exemption might be that the property has recently been damaged by flooding or some kind of other disaster, or that the property is currently undergoing renovation or redevelopment. So if an investment property owner is actually currently redeveloping their property or renovating it so that it's safe to live in, they would be exempt from the proposed increased rates. So it's even possible, conceivably, to have exemptions in situations where the investor-owner has recently died, and the family is deciding what to do with this portfolio of empty investment properties. Personally, though, I think if an investment property is sitting empty for more than six months, really the executor of the estate should be getting tenants in there to generate some revenue while the family works out to do what to do with it. But that's an open question for people to talk through. The core point here, though, is that it's possible to craft a ratings category like this, that captures those properties which are being left empty long term, without unfairly penalising investors who have a good reason for leaving their homes empty. The mechanism for identifying investment properties that are sitting empty is quite simple. You would start by ruling out all residential homes that are identified by a council's rating system as owner-occupier homes. You would also rule out homes that have been identified as transitory accommodation under the new council ratings category for Airbnb and short-term accommodation properties. You would rule out any homes that have a tenancy agreement registered with the Residential Tenancies Authority. And in that way, you would be able to exclude all homes that are currently rented out to tenants, or that are being used by owner-occupiers, or that are being rented out as short-term accommodation. That, any homes that are not falling under one of those categories, can be assumed to be a vacant investment property unless the landlord can provide evidence that they're renting it out to, or that they're giving it out for free to a friend or relative, or on some informal lease arrangement. Other jurisdictions that have implemented similar vacancy levies also look at data sets like water usage, and that's another way of deciding whether a property might be empty. The difficulty with looking at water usage alone is that there are some unit complexes where apartments are not individually metered. So an apartment complex might be using water, but an individual unit within that block might not be using water, and that wouldn't show up as vacant if you're purely looking at water usage rates, or indeed electricity rates, where apartments don't have their electricity individually metered. But as a general principle, the point here is that it's easy to identify the homes that are long-term vacant. I'm sure we all get complaints from residents from time to time about that abandoned property that's just sitting there deteriorating. It's easy to craft a ratings category that specifically applies to those long-term vacant investment properties, without penalising investors who are actually trying to get tenants in, or have a legitimate reason for keeping their property empty. And the point is that we need to do this to free up that existing housing stock, so we can end the housing crisis.
Thank you, councillor Sri. Further debate? Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I rise to enter this debate, and I'm quite concerned at the breathtaking hypocrisy of the Greens councillor on the other side of the chamber, because earlier today, he made this statement that council shouldn't be controlling people's lives. And yet, this is exactly what he is propagating in this motion.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Sri.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Claimed to be misrepresented. Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. The hand side will see me correct in that regard. But this is very important, Mr Chair. In recent weeks, we have seen the leader of the Greens in this council encourage break-in enters as a legitimate housing policy, and openly justify shoplifting. Yet now, he wants law-abiding residents and homeowners slugged with a massive tax hike. That's irrespective of the impact of shoplifting on the many businesses right across our city and our nation. It is a disgrace, councillor Adaman, you're exactly correct. This is coming from a councillor who doesn't even pay any rates at all. Zero rates he pays.
Point of order, Chair.
So it is clear.
Councillor Owen?
Is this relevant to the motion that's being debated?
It's about rates.
So councillor Owen, could you refer it back to the relevance of the debate, please?
Thank you, Mr Chair. The relevance is we are talking about ratable properties in this city, and the Greens councillor over there does not pay any rates on any ratable property in this city. It is quite clear that the Greens believe that some people should be exempt from the rules, while others deserve to be loaded up with more rules and higher taxes. If the Greens councillor thinks that all landlords are bludges, then I wonder what he thinks investors are. As the Lord Mayor has previously observed, the self-proclaimed anarchist is really a big fan of creating new rules for everyone else, but not himself. The leader of the Greens in this council is demonstrating the very, very real and present danger that the Greens in this city pose to residents if they were ever to achieve their aim of a power-sharing arrangement with Labor in City Hall. The Shriner council will continue to address the housing crisis by implementing commonsense planning solutions through the neighbourhood planning process, and through the facilitation of development approvals. Because when supply goes up, prices come down. Labor and the Greens have a very poor track record on supporting housing in Brisbane. The Greens councillor in this place opposes virtually every new residential development application in his ward. And the Labor councillors have voted against 14 out of the last 16 neighbourhood plans.
Point of order, councillor Sri Ranganathan. Will councillor Owen take a question about how she knows which developments I object to?
Councillor Owen, will you take a question?
No, I don't intend to take any questions. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Please continue.
If Labor and the Greens in this chamber actually change their If Labor and the Greens in this chamber actually change their approach, the housing in this city, to the housing in this city, crazy motions like this one would not be required. So, Mr. Chair, on that note, this side of the chamber will not be supporting this motion.
Further debate? Councilor Cassidy? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Sri Ranganathan, misrepresentation.
Yeah, look, I'm not going to repeat it, I just thought it was a little bit uncool of Councilor Owen to start putting words in my mouth. That's not what I said. No, it's not what I said, Councilor Owen.
If you could just...
I mean, I can't even get a word in without being interjected by Councilor Owen. Obviously, we live in a society where it's appropriate to have some regulations, and I've been clear about that. I did not say that I think there should be no regulations or no rules in this city, and Councilor Owen is lying if she claims that I did.
All right, thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on this motion before us today, and if Councilor Owen is now speaking on behalf of the administration and on behalf of the so-called Shriner Council, God help us all. The LMP's approach through Councilor Owen is that if you do absolutely nothing to address the housing crisis this city faces now, then it'll be all okay. In some fairy tale world that Councilor Owen, who now leads the LMP by the looks of it in this place, on thought and on policy, thinks that this problem will just address itself. She also believes, from her comments there, that if you don't pay rates in this city, your opinion doesn't matter to this administration, to this LMP administration, particularly when it comes to housing and housing affordability. And what this motion is talking about is about rental housing stock and rental affordability. So it's clear that the LMP administration doesn't care about renters, and doesn't care about this housing crisis facing our city, and they prove that time and time again. We are a city that is on the cusp of enormous opportunity. We're looking 10 years ahead to an Olympics Games being delivered, Olympics and Paralympic Games being delivered here in Brisbane. And one of the legacies we don't want to see is a city that is unlivable, that housing is unattainable for people, whether they're looking to buy a house, or whether they're looking to rent a house in the suburbs that make up Brisbane. Now, we know that Brisbane is largely built on a floodplain, with a long history of severe flooding. Not only will this affect the budgets of councils and governments in the long term, it also creates an existential crisis for many residents. Will those residents have a home in 10 years' time, in 20 years' time, in 30 years' time? These flood events are becoming more devastating and widespread, as we've seen in 2022. When we look forward to the most optimistic predictions about sea level rises affecting a city like Brisbane, we know that on monthly king tides, people's houses will be inundated in 30 or 40 years' time. And what is this administration planning to do about that? Absolutely nothing. We've seen house prices and rents soar over the last year and year and a half, particularly in some suburbs, there's annual property price increases of 30% and over 20% for rentals. It's not uncommon to hear of weekly rent increases of $150 at the end of a lease. Families, individuals, and our most vulnerable are being made homeless here in Brisbane. There are 50,000 people and families waiting on the social housing register across South East Queensland, well, Queensland-wide, but the vast concentration of that is in South East Queensland. So we know the scale of the problem in 2022, but what is the solution? Well, this is a little more complicated. There are others that lead by example. Vienna's social housing programme ensures long-term housing for people as they enter the market through their careers, creating strong and vibrant communities along the way. Vienna's city government owns and manages 220,000 housing units. Brisbane has an amazing success story called the Brisbane Housing Company. That was founded in 2002 by a Labor council and a Labor state government. That initial seed funding from council of $17 million in 2002, and the state government, I think $40 or $50 million at the time, has been transformed into $350 million worth of affordable rental stock totaling 1,700 units of housing. Now, the quickest and simplest thing that Brisbane City Council can do to support affordable housing providers, to deliver new affordable rental stock, is infrastructure charge discounts. Tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure charge discounts have been gifted by this LMP administration over just recent years, but not one cent has gone to housing providers. In fact, most of that has gone to private developers building five-star hotels in the CBD. We don't need more luxury hotels, we need housing variety, and we need more affordable rentals, but we need a council that is willing to support that. Land is becoming more expensive, and we'll see a situation where more land becomes undevelopable in the future. An existing shortage is now compounded by climate change. We need to rethink planning laws and fast-track sustainable investment in housing for a whole new generation of people. With wages stagnant for a decade, creeping inflation and supply shortages, this is a storm that many residents here in Brisbane won't weather, let alone the devastating effects for future generations to come. We've had government interventions in the housing space before, various policies in the past included subsidised interest rates and rent grants and government housing, of course. Labor, Labor governments and Labor council administrations understand the obligation to deliver secure and safe housing. We know our opponents don't hold those same convictions. Counselor Angela Owen, speaking on behalf of this entire LMP administration, confirmed that here today. Principles and values matter when it comes to important policies like housing. And unlike the LMP, we, as a party, were founded on the basis of understanding and using the power of government to make sure no one is left behind. We once had a council willing to take up these fights and have these conversations and be a champion for affordable housing, and we can again when we get rid of the LMP. We should leverage the investment required for the 2032 Olympic Games athletes' village. The Tokyo Olympics saw 23 buildings housing 12,000 people. The state government should commit to reserving that stock for social and affordable housing after the Olympics. Vacancy levies, investing directly with housing providers, offering incentives, and in some cases requiring the provision of social housing as part of key developments, should all be considered, nothing should be off the table. There is no doubt that the state and federal governments should be doing the heavy lifting, and we want to see more results from their investments. But as Australia's largest council, and as the host city for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, Brisbane must do more. So we support having a conversation about vacancy levies as described by Counselor Sri Ranganathan. Having that conversation as part of a broader look at the housing crisis and a broader package of support to community housing providers should happen. Simply looking at this through the lens of vacancy levies alone is too narrow. Simply looking at this through the lens of, in Counselor Angela Owen's words, neighbourhood planning and business as usual is yesterday's news, is the kind of thing you would expect to hear from a tired, old, 18-year-old LMP administration. What we need to see is a council administration that is willing to have these conversations, willing to take up the fight and be a champion for affordable housing once again, like we did under a Labor administration through the 90s and 2000s.
Further debate? Councilor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on the motion encouraging efficient use of residential homes that I have seconded for the councillor for the Gabb Award, for the purposes of debate. And I just want to put on the record a few things, and I'm literally still deciding pretty much what I'm going to do at this point, but there's a few things that are influencing my decision one way or the other. Firstly, I find the hypocrisy of the LMP, and particularly the Lord Mayor on this issue, to be extremely telling. It's only a few months ago in this place that the Lord Mayor introduced a new rates levy for houses that are being used, quote, "like hotels", and a new rating category was introduced to ensure that Airbnb properties went back into the rental market. Now, we don't know at this point whether that's been successful, and it has only been a few months, but obviously, making sure that the available stock of residential homes are being used for residential purposes is a very good objective, and one that was supported during the budget. Now, the Lord Mayor at that time made a number, and since, including even today, has made a number of statements, basically saying that, and I'm quoting from the Lord Mayor's public release about the transitory Airbnb tax. "The situation is impacting a significant number of people, so getting owners to return homes to the long-term rental market is an important step." That's what the Lord Mayor of Brisbane City Council publicly said three months ago in this place. That's what he's been saying publicly on the radio, and to many others. Let me repeat that. This is what the Lord Mayor of Brisbane says. "The situation is impacting a significant number of people, so getting owners to return homes to the long-term rental market is an important step." He also went on to say this. "It is my hope that instead of paying extra, many owners will return these houses and apartments to the long-term rental market, which will help ease our housing shortage. There is no silver bullet when it comes to housing affordability, but this is one way we can play a part at the local government level." Now, that's the Lord Mayor in June. Today, the Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor can't be bothered to be in the chamber for a debate. The Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor stand up week after week and criticise any councillor who is not in the LMP, and say they have no ideas. They say it over and over again every week. Then when ideas are brought to this place, not to force a solution, not to force a solution on the people of Brisbane, but, to quote the motion, "to undertake widespread public consultation and investigate a separate higher ratings category for residential investment properties that are left vacant for six months." Now, this is a policy decision that the Lord Mayor supports when he puts it forward to council. If somebody else puts up another idea for consideration, he can't be bothered to even participate in the debate. Instead, he sends the former deputy mayor for international relations and multicultural affairs and a bunch of other things out to essentially attack the messenger by saying he doesn't pay rates, and I think there was something about shoplifting as well. The idea of this motion is people who do not have secure accommodation will benefit from a number of market forces that make it easier for properties to be rented out. So the benefit of this actually flows to people who don't own a property. Now, that's completely lost on the LMP altogether, other than when they propose it and say for the exact same purposes that this should be the way to go with Airbnb. So I think the really interesting part of this, again, is that even this morning on radio, the Lord Mayor was again calling for a vacant property not being used at Pinkenbar, which just happens to be owned by a Labor government, to be rented out to help deal with the homelessness problem. It's very clear here what the problem is, and that is, if the idea is not proposed by the LMP, it's not worth considering. If the idea, and it's the very same principle, that long-term vacant property at Pinkenbar, owned by the state government, should be, well, I don't even know who owns it, actually, that seems to be unclear at this point, but a long-term vacant property should be rented out. The Lord Mayor is publicly calling for this to happen. It's pretty clear the only reason he's calling for it to happen is because there's a Labor government at the state and federal level. So when he proposes the idea, he's all for it. When it can hurt the Labor Party, he's all for it. But when others put forward an idea not to force onto residents, not to force an outcome, but again, and I quote, "to undertake widespread public consultation", and the motion makes it clear that the higher rates and charges would not apply to owner-occupier homes or tenanted investment properties. So this is just a discussion paper, a white paper. What do we get? Finance chair doesn't speak, planning chair doesn't speak. These are the people in the city responsible for the management of policy decisions when it comes to rates and planning. They're both in the chamber, they couldn't be bothered to speak. The deputy mayor, who's in charge of economic development for the city, she's not in the chamber and can't be bothered to speak. And the Lord Mayor, who believes, and I quote again the following... Sorry, I'm just going to get the right quote here. "The situation is impacting a significant number of people, so getting owners to return homes to the long-term rental market is an important step." Now, that could be pulled out, put on the front page of the glossy brochure that would no doubt accompany such a discussion paper if one was to be had, and the same quote that the Lord Mayor used three months ago could be used to support the argument that's here before us today. But because it's not their idea, because they are only interested in playing politics, because the Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor don't want to be seen to be looking at this homelessness solution in a substantive way, and remember, the Lord Mayor this morning called for this to happen, a long-term vacant property he's calling to be leased out. It's just that he can do it politically because it's the Labor Party. The best the LMP have got in this area is to send out the former deputy mayor for international relations... Stop it, Steve, we're all giggled. The former deputy mayor for international relations and multicultural affairs, who basically makes it some sort of sin that Counselor Sri Ranganathan does not own his own home. I think, do you own your boat?
I own the boat.
He owns a boat, so he does own his own home, thanks very much. He does own his own home, it just doesn't happen to be a house. And accuse him of all things that aren't even relevant to the debate before us today. So I'll finish up just by saying, this is what is wrong with the LMP administration in this place. They have lost any kind of energy, any kind of ideas, and if it's not an idea that they propose, even when it has the exact same principles, they're not even going to consider it. Instead, they send a back, a now backbencher out to slam the person who's moved the motion, not provide any stats, and I think we need more information on this. I don't necessarily accept all the figures that Counselor Sri's put out, but clearly we're already collecting some of that data as part of the process with the Airbnbs. So it'd be very interesting to understand the extent of the problem, the extent of the impact of it in Brisbane. We don't have enough information. And whilst I may not support a new rating category ultimately down the track, I definitely support finding more information and consulting with the people of Brisbane to determine the outcome of this.
Any further debate? Councilor Sri Ranganathan?
Thanks, Jan. Thanks to those who participated in the discussion. I am reminded of the old maxim, I think it's something along the lines of, like, first they ignore you, and then they laugh at you and mock you, and then they attack you, and then they win. And I certainly feel like I've gone through that journey here in the chamber over the last few years, where for a couple of years, the LMP just completely ignored me, then they started to make fun of me. Lately, they've been attacking me quite a bit, which I think suggests a certain level of nervousness, and I guess I'm optimistic that in the coming years, the final chapter of that maxim will come true, and then we'll win, and we'll be able to get some serious changes in terms of policy to address the needs of the most vulnerable members of our community. Counselor Cassidy was 100% right when he said that this is only one piece of the puzzle. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I agree, there's a lot we need to do in the housing policy space, and particularly including increasing the supply of public housing, that's crucial. But this is one important piece of the puzzle, because if we strengthen renters' rights, if we make it harder for landlords to evict tenants, for example... if we make it harder for landlords to evict tenants, for example, then there is a risk that some landlords will say, "Well, I don't want to have tenants at all. I'll just hold on to the property and wait for the values to rise." So, a vacancy charge or vacancy levy or whatever you want to call it is an important piece of the policy landscape as part of other interventions into the housing system. I thought Councillor Johnston very aptly made the point that the council administration is already introducing something very similar to what I've proposed here today. And I think it's interesting. We don't have time to go into details of why one and not the other. But essentially, we do already have different tiers of rating categories for different uses of properties. We have one tier of rating categories for owner-occupy homes. We have another tier of rating rates for investment properties. We have another tier for investment properties that are rented out as short-term accommodation on platforms like Airbnb. All I'm proposing here is another tier for homes that are left vacant long-term for no good reason. And I thought it was intellectually dishonest and intellectually lazy for councillor Owen to mount these arguments of hypocrisy, when in fact, the LNP is very active in the space of regulating how housing can be used. The council implements all manner of regulations shaping how homes can be used, how they can be designed, how many people are allowed to live in them. I probably don't need to remind the chamber at length, but this council administration makes it illegal or a violation of the city plan for more than five adults to live in, more than five unrelated adults to live in a house together. Even if a house has six or seven bedrooms and two kitchens and three bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. The council applies a regulation that says to those private property owners, "We're going to tell you how you can use your property. We're not going to let you have more than five unrelated adults in this home." So, ideologically, the council is already contradicting itself, or the LNP administration is already contradicting themselves because on the one hand, they're claiming that they don't want to interfere with private property owner rights and suggesting that it's inappropriate to tell people how to use their private investment properties. But on the other hand, they are very active in interfering with how housing is used and how many people can live there, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think there's a real kind of cognitive disconnect here where the LNP has convinced itself, or certain councillors in the LNP, I don't want to speak for all of them because I didn't actually get to hear what any of the rest of them think. But certain councillors have convinced themselves that they are somehow the non-interventionists. "We never tell people how to use their land. We never tell people how to use their property. We don't interfere in the so-called free market." But then, they're always interfering with the free market. And what I propose here is actually a very modest and moderate intervention. I think councillor Owen used the terminology of this being a new tax or something along the lines of the effect that it's a big imposition. This has got to be the easiest tax in history to avoid. You literally just have to have a tenant, right? Like, this is not going to apply to probably 95% of property investors in Brisbane. This is only targeted at the very small proportion of property investors who are predominantly, as I said at the start, property developers, land speculators, multinational investment funds, people who buy lockups just to park their money because they want to avoid some tax liability or whatever. These are not necessarily going to be mom-and-dad investors, the kind of people who have like one, maybe two, investment properties and rely on rental revenue. This is targeted at the class of property investors who, honestly, they're often not even people. They're actual companies, right? This is not individuals. This is larger companies by and large that are engaging in this behaviour. I visited one of those properties just today to check it out. There's a block of units on Main Street in Kangaroo Point. There's about 70 units that have been empty there now since 2019. In that case, a developer has already gotten approval for 20-story high-rise on that site. They've got approval to demolish the existing 70 units and put in a new high-rise tower. And they've left that place vacant for three or four years now. And in that entire time, those 70 units could have been used to house vulnerable people. And we could have been making use of that efficient housing stock. And what's bizarre about the rhetoric and the narratives that the LNP administration are employing here today is that according to their logic, according to their logic, it would be fine and perfectly acceptable for a single investor, you know, mega wealthy multinational investment fund or billionaire or whoever, it would be perfectly acceptable, according to their worldview, for one person to buy up an entire suburb of homes. They could buy up every home in West End. They could just splurge, go to town, buy the whole suburb and choose to leave the whole suburb completely empty. And according to the LNP administration, that would be fine. That's what we're talking about here, is that the LNP administration is seriously trying to tell us that it is acceptable that in a busy, growing city where land and housing is in short supply and where it is difficult for people to find affordable rental accommodation, they're saying that it's acceptable for homes to sit empty? Just examine your consciences. Think about the moral implications of what you're doing here. We've got families sleeping on the street. We've got people sleeping in their cars. If councillors after this meeting walk down Adelaide Street around the corner to King George Square, you'll see homeless people sleeping on bus shelter benches, sleeping in building alcoves. Those people are sleeping out in the cold while quality housing is sitting empty. That's not acceptable. And this council administration has already recognized that it does play an active role in intervening in and guiding the housing market. This council administration already has tiered and differential ratings categories to help shape behaviour of property owners and property investors. So, there's no sound ideological justification for why it's so resistant to this proposal. And I thought the weakness of the arguments that councillor Owen put forward was perhaps the strongest endorsement of this proposed policy because she literally had nothing of substance to say as to why this is a bad idea. It was just ad hominem attacks. "Oh, councillor Sri Ranganathan this, oh, he does that." Couldn't even engage with the substance of the motion because it's actually a good idea. And other administrations across the world are implementing similar policies and approaches. This is not a radical leftist agenda. This is something that a whole bunch of different jurisdictions of different political persuasions have implemented over the years. Even down in New South Wales, Dominic Parate, he's talking about generalized land taxes to encourage more efficient use of real estate and property. I'm not even going that far. I'm just saying the properties that are left vacant for more than six months, they could be put to good use. And that's not a radical proposition. It's not a threat to the financial interests of ordinary residents. It is a threat to some of the multinational investment funds and property developers and speculators who cannibalize and profit from our communities while giving nothing back. And that's really what this is about at the end of the day. It's about who controls the shape of our city. Who gets a say when an entire block is just left vacant for years with like the yard going to ruin and the houses falling into disrepair and no one held accountable while some character homes just like fall apart? The residents around the neighbourhood don't get any say. It's just that one property investor who's sitting there waiting for land values to rise, who's waiting for their house to fall apart so that they can demolish it. There's a serious problem here with the way housing is used as a speculative commodity. And this proposed motion is just one small piece of the puzzle to correct that. But it's also one of the quickest and most effective interventions into the broken housing system. And that's why I've been at pains to advocate for it because if right now, we were to introduce higher rates for investor properties, there are three things that would happen. Some investors wouldn't care. They'd just pay the higher rates. They'd just wear, cop it on the chin. Maybe they'd even write it off as a tax deduction. It wouldn't shift their behaviour in any meaningful way. But we would get that revenue. We would get that rates revenue. And we could put that towards essential services like crisis accommodation, housing support, public space outreach offices, et cetera. The second possible course of action is that some investors would sell. They'd say, "You know what? This isn't profitable for me anymore. I don't want to hold on to this vacant investment property because you're charging me higher rates." And they would sell those homes, and then people could actually buy them and live in them. Wouldn't that be great? That they would sell those homes, lease them back onto the market. Someone else could buy it, maybe do it up or renovate it if necessary, and people could actually live there. Or those investors would say, "Oh, I don't want to pay the higher rates."
Your time is coming.
I think I had a bit of time left, but that's fine.
I will now put the motion. Those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
I'll get a division, thanks.
Division has been called by councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Division.
And by councillor Johnston. Councillors, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Woolley, please ring the bell. I would never do that. Hey, Woolley, please lock the bars. Clerk, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the noes have it. The voting being seven in favour and 19 against.
The noes have it. Councillors, we will now move to petitions. Are there any petitions? Councillor Hung?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a petition about parking on Crown Street, Upper Mount Gravatt.
And councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Chair. I also have a petition, which I think is the paper petition of the one councillor Hung sent about Tyron Street, Upper Mount Gravatt, and also a petition opposing the proposed development of 32 Maclean Street and 121 Spade Street, Brighton.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I have a petition on behalf of Lord Mayor from councillor Strunk about residents who live in Columbus Street and other.
Any other petitions? No? Councillor Landis, may I have a motion for the receipt of petitions?
Mr. Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Could I?
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Cassidy that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an office of the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? No? Councillors, are there any matters of general business? Councillor Adamant?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak about a longstanding issue in my ward, which thanks to the Trinna Council with the support of the state's Department of Transport and Main Roads will soon be resolved. Since my election in 2020, I've been working with the Brookfield State School, the Brookfield Community Council Officers and the state member for Moghl, Dr. Christian Rowan, on a road safety solution for schoolchildren on Brookfield Road during the busy drop-off and pick-up times. Over the years, there have been instances where children have been hit by motorists and many more near misses. I still recall the conversation I had with the distraught father of a student who had been hit by a vehicle while trying to cross Brookfield Road after school. Thankfully, she escaped serious injury, but that just reinforced to me that something needed to be done. After discussions with the experts, a designated school zone during school hours, which is seven till nine in the morning, two to four in the afternoon, with a speed reduction to 40 km an hour and a supervised crossing appeared to be the obvious solution. But it wasn't that simple. Because Brookfield Road School, Brookfield State School didn't have frontage to Brookfield Road, it wasn't entitled to an official school zone. At one stage last year, I was advised in writing that the education department would purchase the easement through the Showgrounds Reserve, which would have given Brookfield School frontage and an automatic entitlement to a school zone. But that proved to be a false alarm. The state government, for some reason, decided not to proceed with that purchase. I undertook to the school's PNC to consult with the Brookfield community to determine the best way to go forward. Unsurprisingly, a large percentage of respondents believed a 40 km an hour speed reduction during the busy before and after-school period was the preferred solution. I again wrote to the Department of Transport and Main Roads in July this year saying that we needed a circuit breaker and requesting that Brookfield Road be considered as a special case for a school zone. To my delight, TMR responded in writing that they now supported a supervised school crossing at Brookfield Road. I want to publicly thank TMR for this, along with my colleague, the infrastructure chair, councillor Wines, for his ongoing support. As we on this side of the chamber know, councillor Wines is a common sense, practical chair who doesn't let red tape get in the way of a sensible outcome. I also want to thank Dr. Rowan.
Councillor Johnston, please. Councillor Adamant, please proceed.
Thank you. I also want to thank Dr. Rowan, council's TNO officers and the Brookfield community for their patience and support in achieving a dedicated school zone for Brookfield Road. Council officers will now work with TMR to deliver this important local community project. And I look forward to providing an update on exactly where and when it will be installed and operational. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Further general business? Councillor, oh, councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Chair, yeah, I just wanted to speak on a couple of items. The first is around road safety in my electorate. And we had some commentary in the chamber a few weeks ago about the speed limits and that sort of thing. But the reality is that the volumes of traffic through inner-city neighbourhoods are getting higher and higher. And I'm hearing more and more complaints from residents, particularly families with kids, about how they don't feel safe letting their children walk to school. And I'm concerned that this council administration is not doing enough to invest in safe pedestrian crossings or traffic calming. And I'm also concerned that the council administration hasn't factored in the increase in costs of delivering infrastructure via budgets like the Suburban Enhancement Fund. So, I, yeah, my time is not going. I can see that again. So, the...
I've got you at 55 seconds, councillor.
Thanks, yeah, I've only got it at 45, so, interesting. The council administration allocates a certain amount of discretionary funding each financial year for each ward to spend on things like footpath upgrades. And in more recent years, we've been allowed to spend that also on things like traffic calming if we really want. The problem, though, is that construction costs have risen significantly, but the actual budget allocation for that particular fund hasn't increased in response. Does, can someone remind me which budget item, which programme does that sit under now? Is it still under transport? Or is it, where's the SEF sit on? SEF now sits under Programme 5. Yeah, okay. So, I guess the responsible chair should perhaps think about this and look seriously at whether that funding can be increased as part of the next budget review because we're being told that we've got to deliver all these new footpaths. We're expected to deliver playground upgrades and park upgrades and now traffic calming and pedestrian crossings and all sorts of things via that one fund. But the budget is very thin, to put it bluntly. I've gone through the process of consulting with a group of residents on Blakeney Street in Highgate Hill about installing traffic calming there. And we allocated the funding, and the council came up with a concept design and consulted, and the city projects team did their full consultation, said, "Yeah, we're going to go ahead with it." Then, the council went out to tender. Blakeney Street's a couple of hundred metres long. Get this, everyone. Anyone, any guesses on how much we were quoted for traffic calming on Blakeney Street in Highgate Hill? Five hundred thousand. $500,000 for one short residential street in Highgate Hill to do traffic calming. That's like the whole suburban enhancement fund. That was like four pairs of chicanes or build-outs plus a little change to curb and channel near one of the entrances to the street. That's a huge amount of money for one short, small traffic calming project. This was after the councillors already spent the money doing the consultation and the initial design, and I think even some of the detailed design work. And now, we're realising, oh, because the tenders have come back so expensive, we might not be able to proceed with that project. So, the council administration, I think this is relevant to councillor Murphy. It's certainly relevant to councillor Davis and to councillor Marks, and I suppose to the finance chair as well. There's a problem brewing here where the money available through the Suburban Enhancement Fund isn't enough to actually meet the increase in cost of infrastructure due to rising construction costs, labour costs, et cetera. So, just as the council always reallocates more funding when other projects turn out to be more expensive than anticipated, the council administration should also be allocating more funding to the Suburban Enhancement Fund budget so that we can actually deliver the projects that residents most need on the ground. That's not a radical proposition. It just makes common sense considering how much the cost has increased. I particularly, though, wanted to speak about Wellington Road and how disappointed I am that we still haven't seen any funding allocated. that we still haven't seen any funding allocated for traffic lights over Wellington Road between East Brisbane and Kangaroo Point. This is on the border of my electorate and Cooperu ward, and I know councillor Cunningham also wants to see those traffic lights delivered, but I don't see any money being allocated for them, and that's what I'm really concerned about, is that we've got a very busy corridor, we've got more and more people living along that corridor, we've had new apartments built on either side of Wellington Road in the past couple of years, we've got people trying to cross the road to get to the local school, to get to the local park, to get to bus stops and public transport routes, and people can't safely cross the road. It's a four-lane road in peak hour, and it feels very dangerous. I've seen a lot of near misses in that area, I've seen a lot of cars taking sharp bends and sharp turns out of the side streets and not giving way to pedestrians. The corridor feels dangerous, and I'm really concerned about people's safety along that corridor. I've written about this repeatedly to the relevant chairs, and I'm really troubled that the council is not taking that safety concern seriously on Wellington Road between Kangaroo Point and East Brisbane. I'm also equally concerned about the lack of safe intersections and signalisations along Montague Road in the vicinity of Ferry Road and Rogers Street, and now around the new Woolworths development. That's a precinct where thousands of residents have moved in in the last couple of years. We've got something like fifteen thousand cars moving along Montague Road now, and a lot of, a lot of active transport, a lot of pedestrians and cyclists using the Montague Road corridor, and in particular using those intersections around Rogers Street, Ferry Road, Carilpa Street, et cetera. And it's very, very unsafe. And we've provided the data, we've highlighted the issue to TPO, and predictably, there's no money there for actual improvements. And I think the council is really neglecting an important safety issue here, and I think the council administration needs to recognise that it's spending too much on really big road widening projects like the Mogul Road roundabout disaster, and not spending enough on local pedestrian crossings, localised intersection upgrades, that dollar for dollar represent far better value for money. And I am interested in understanding more about how we negotiate with the federal government in terms of what kinds of project style fund. I get a bit frustrated when I see a hundred million dollars dropped on one major project, but the federal government not contributing any money towards smaller local black spot projects, which seem to be a little bit more common in the past. So there's a really significant concern there, and I'm troubled that the council is still not taking pedestrian safety seriously in the inner city. The other issue I wanted to raise and speak to briefly was the increase in strain we're seeing on public green spaces in my electorate. Strain on public green spaces manifests in a couple of ways. One is that we see more parks being fenced off for major events, and it's now, you know, a couple of times in a month that major parks like Musgrave Park are hosting big events, which to some extent excludes other members of the public from those public green spaces. But the shortage of public green space also manifests in the fact that we don't have enough fields for all the sports teams living in the inner city, the local soccer club doesn't have anywhere to, doesn't have a permanent fixed field there, like living off the good graces of the rugby league club. There's no green spaces available for new facilities, and there's also no appropriate spaces left for facilities like dog-off leash areas or skate parks. I have money in my Suburban Enhancement Fund that I would like to be able to allocate towards a new skate park, but so far, the council officers have refused to support the couple of locations we proposed, and haven't been able to identify any other locations that they would support a new skate park at. I recently wrote to councillor Davis and councillor Murphy about the potential of creating a new skate park at one hundred and twenty-five Gray Street, South Brisbane. That's the small park that's being created as part of the Brisbane Metro project. I think that's probably the best remaining option to create a skate park in the four-one-o-one postcode, and I hope that those chairs will get back to me and look seriously at the feasibility of that one, because I think it's a pretty good idea. It's right next to a train station, so noise complaints aren't going to be an issue. There's plenty of foot traffic in the area, it's nice and central, it's, yeah, well honestly, I'm happy to put my Suburban Enhancement Fund money towards it, I just want the space. And that's really the problem we have in the Gabba Ward, is that there just isn't the space to put these facilities. And I've been on about this skate park for like seven years now, we've had multiple petitions, we've tried every avenue, we've proposed a range of different locations. But it's just another symptom of the shortage of public green space relatively, relative to the number of residents in the area. The four-one-o-one postcode now has about thirty-five thousand residents just in that one postcode, just in the suburbs of West End, Highgate Hill and South Brisbane. That doesn't even include Woolen Gabba and Kangaroo Point and Dutton Park, the other parts of my ward. So that one, you know, suburban precinct or that one Carilpa Peninsula has got thirty-five thousand people living it, and there's been no significant increase in the provision of public green space to cater for all that new growth. And as a result, those residents of my ward are driving further out, they're putting increased strain on suburban sporting facilities out in Fairfield and Annerley, or in the inner-north around Inogra, and the council is under increasing pressure to provide more parking spaces to allow people to use those green spaces in other areas, because they don't have enough green space in their own neighbourhood. So this is becoming a serious problem, not just for my local ward, but it's flowing on into other parts of the city, and I think the council needs to take this shortage of public green space much more seriously than it currently is.
Thank you, further general business, councillor Landis?
Thank you Chair, and I just rise to speak about guide dogs and their Porgus campaign, of which I took part in during August, along with my one-year-old Lulu and my son's four-year-old Freya, who proudly wore their bandanas. And they braved the rain and the cold and having to walk at night, because obviously that was the challenge, having to walk every day. And sometimes you just couldn't find that time when it wasn't raining, and sometimes you got home very late and had to walk. But that was nothing, or is nothing compared to the challenge that people who have a vision impairment have to face every day. So in the process of our walk, we managed to do, on Lulu's little perdomina, sixty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-five steps, which isn't approximate, because Lulu set a cracking pace and lost it for a couple of days, but we did fortunately find it when we were walking again. I managed to raise seven hundred and forty-seven dollars with the help of friends, family and councillors, fellow councillors, so thank you very much. Overall, there was seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-four people who participated, and they raised nine hundred and ninety-two thousand and forty-seven dollars. So these funds pay for things such as treats and rewards to help puppies master vital guiding skills. Fifty-five dollars, for example, pays for a cane to help a child to get around safely. A hundred and twenty-four dollars will pay for a special harness to help dogs walk, work safely with an instructor, and two hundred dollars will pay for a graduated dog to spend special one-on-one training with their new human. So it's not too late to donate, and if you are in a position to do so, you can go on to the Porgus website and do so. It does cost in excess of fifty thousand dollars to breed, raise and train one guide dog. Every hour of every day, an Australian family learns that their loved one will have severe or permanent sight loss, and nine of these Australians will eventually go blind. There are over four hundred and fifty thousand Australians who are blind or have low vision. This Saturday is the open day for Queensland Guide Dog Centre, which is in my ward at Bald Hills, and I have proudly supported them through the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. The day will be from ten AM to four PM, and include guide dog demonstrations, you can snap a pic with a puppy, take a tour of the campus, kids can play on the inflatable zone, and you can of course enjoy a coffee and a bite to eat. It is a ticketed event with adults at ten dollars and children over three or five dollars, but all of this important money will go towards raising guide dog puppies. So if you're interested in going, please hop online at the guide dogs' website and book your ticket. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor, any other general business? There being no other general business, we'll now move to the adjourned motion, and we'll have councillor Cook open the debate. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr Chair, would you like me to read out the motion?
No, it was moved in seconds.
Thank you, Mr Chair, this motion was brought today to this place by the Australian Labor Party councillors, as we had hoped to see a commitment from the mayor of this city, Adrian Shrinna, to installing all three flags on the Story Bridge, that is, the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags in addition to the Australian flag. Sadly, the dialogue from the Lord Mayor today has been, and I quote, "We are stealing ideas from other people" that he has no commitment to installing the flags. The Lord Mayor also said he has investigated ideas for installing new and bigger flagpoles in the past, presumably for the Australian flag only, but he has said that this was a long and costly process involving several million dollars that he simply wasn't willing to spend. So, Mr Chair, let's have a quick look at what this Lord Mayor is willing to spend several million dollars on. This Lord Mayor is willing to spend six million dollars on advertising, he's willing to spend two point six million on the Bonsai House, and this Lord Mayor is willing to spend around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars on LMP councillor allowances each and every year. But he's not willing to spend several million, well, we think it's several million, no specifics provided about the actual costs. Perhaps we'll get the full costing during the debate today, but perhaps that's unlikely given the Lord Mayor's not present in the chamber, on what would be an important and meaningful instalment of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge. The Lord Mayor has also said today that he supports the flying of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags, but just not on the Story Bridge. He also said he met with elders just last week, and that they had ample time apparently to raise this, but didn't. He didn't say that he had raised anything about this type of idea with them. I'm not sure why the Indigenous elders not raising this issue with him means that we can't consider it here for the council today. But finally, he said that no one else has raised it with him, and if anyone cared, they would have. So he doesn't think that it's an issue. This motion today is necessary and important, because there has been no commitment from the mayor to fly all three flags proudly from our most significant bridge in our city. Currently, the Australian flag is the only flag that flies atop the Story Bridge, and Labor thinks that the time has come, in the spirit of reconciliation, to make this change in our city. Just this week, Mr Chair, council released its very first reconciliation action plan. We all know that council has a lot of work to do to achieve genuine reconciliation in our city. It is very clear from the reconciliation action plan that council is in the very early stages of their reconciliation journey, given the contents of their Innovate Rap. And upon reviewing the new reconciliation action plan, it is also clear that there isn't a commitment to flying the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge in that document. And in the absence of that commitment, it is incumbent on this council to implement that change today. We know that council must work in partnership with Brisbane's First Nations people and communities, traditional custodians, community groups and other organisations that support reconciliation within the city. We know as an institution, council is committed to strengthening relationships with First Nations communities to ensure that all people feel safe and engaged in the future of the city, and this is explicitly stated in the rap. The other thing that is mentioned in the rap is a commitment to developing a policy around the display of flags, but again, no commitment to where those locations would be, like the Story Bridge. One way that council can practically engage with our First Nations community and work towards genuine reconciliation is by supporting a visual representation of all three flags flying side by side on our city's most iconic bridge. We know that other capital cities proudly display these flags on their iconic bridges, like the Sydney Harbour Bridge in New South Wales. When that change was made, it was said by Shari Toka, who had campaigned for years for that change in Sydney, and I quote, she said, "Yes, it is a symbolic gesture, however, it identifies the true history of Australia, and to see that flag on the bridge will spark conversation and educate people about the Indigenous people of this country." Also, in Victoria, it was recently announced that the Aboriginal flag would also fly permanently above Melbourne's West Gate Bridge. "We must, Mr Chair, as a city, recognise and acknowledge our city and our country's true history and truth-telling. We must develop stronger relationships with our First Nations community that will improve communication and opportunities, develop empathy and understanding, build respect and foster an inclusive city committed to reconciliation. This is the first step. Mr Chair, Labor thinks that this change is necessary, and that the time has come to reaffirm our commitment as a city to fly all flags proudly together. This land always was and always will be Aboriginal land."
Further debate? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, and I rise to speak in relation to this motion, and I would like to stand here and say that the Shrinna Council has made a significant commitment to reconciliation inclusivity in this city for the last fifteen years. We were the first city in Australia to introduce and access an inclusion plan to make sure that people could get around the city, and we are absolutely committed to the reconciliation action plan. That was presented today in committee. And I have to say that it is disappointing that councillor Griffiths and councillor Cumming didn't let councillor Cook know about the presentation, so she could have asked him questions there and really understood how it worked, because the team within council, within the inclusive communities portfolio that have been working on this rap, as we call the reconciliation plan, has been out to very much consultation with the traditional custodians, and all items in the rap were discussed in full with traditional custodians. The reconciliation action plan was presented at the Lord Mayor's meeting with the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders last week. The Story Bridge itself was not raised last week, as the Lord Mayor said, but the raising of flags and supporting the flying of flags has been mentioned. And the rap is the result of a considerable amount of consultation with not only the traditional custodian groups, but also Reconciliation Australia, the organisation which develops and approves the use of reconciliation action plans. Now councillor Cook said she's read the reconciliation action plan, and she mentioned, I presume it was outcome thirty-four of the plan, which is for council, and I'm not quite sure if she understood what it meant, for council to develop a policy and procedure for the display of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags at council-owned and managed assets. A policy and procedure. Yeah, at council-owned managed assets. So we are committed to developing this policy, it is in our action plan, and the Story Bridge is a council-owned and managed asset. So it's definitely can be considered as part of this policy that's being developed. But I do believe that considering the Harbour Bridge was considered twenty-five million dollars, I think, to put a flagpole on it, that there will have to be consideration of the economic viability. And I would just like to also correct councillor Cook, there is not just the national flag on the Story Bridge, there is also the Queensland flag on the Story Bridge as well. So it's all about the details, less about the details and more about getting up the tick-tock for this afternoon for councillor Cook. The reconciliation action plan is a document that has been released by council this week, is a public availability on council's website, and instead of councillor Cook trying to ride roughshod over the traditional custodians having the opportunity to be consulted and work with us on the policies and the procedures and how we do this, I move a procedural motion, that this motion lay on the table until council has undertaken that consultation with traditional custodians, as per the outcome in the Shrinna Council's reconciliation action plan in relation to flags.
I need a...
I second that.
Councillor Murphy, it's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Murphy, that the motion lie on the table. Councillor, this is a procedural motion, so there is no debate. I will now put the motion. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Contrary, no?
No!
The ayes have it.
Division?
Division.
Division, division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Eyes to my right, ayes to my left. Please ring the bells. Please ring the bells. Would you please close the, lock the bars? Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and five against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, as there is no further business, I declare the meeting closed.